Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the October 10th, 2023 School District of Manatee County Regular Board Meeting. It's a beautiful day here, some fall crisp in the air a little bit, it's a little nice, a little nice. If we had windows, maybe we could have them down a little bit. We want to first open up our, our meeting with our reading of our district's vision done by Ms. Bray.
Good morning, everyone. The district vision is that School District of Manatee County will be an exemplary student-focused school system that develops lifelong learners to be globally competitive. And today, we have an invocation by Mr. Jerry Parrish, but I do not see him here. So I will invite Mr. Hartman if he would be so kind to come down and do the invocation for us.
We'll call the bullpen.
Right, if you would all please stand.
Father God, we just thank you for this opportunity to come before your presence with Thanksgiving and to your courts with praise. Lord, you're the God of all creation, and we acknowledge you. We thank you for this Manatee County School District because as far as we're concerned, this is the center of our world. We live and move in this area, Father God, so we lift up all the teachers, all the families, everybody that's involved with the school district. Lord, I just pray that you would continue to work in each one of us to willing to do, if you could, pleasure. And we thank you for this time together, and we give you all the glory and all the honor and praise. In Jesus' name, and everybody said, amen.
Thank you, sir.
You'll join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. That moves us to item number six, approval of the agenda. The chair has found good cause in the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda amendments on the August 8, 2023 Agenda, updated August 4, 2023, and posted to the school district's website, manateeschools.net. A lot of the changes were adding some of our present presentations, some verbiage in some of the consent items, and nothing really too major other than that. So do we have a...
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Let me get into the meeting. So a motion and a second, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the agenda. And that passes five to zero. Item number seven, approval of the minutes. Superintendent Wyson.
Good morning, Chair Choat and board members. I recommend approval of the minutes from the September 26, 2023 School Board Meeting and the September 29, 2023 Special School Board Meeting, accepting the ratified MEA bargaining agreement for the School District of Manatee County.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Bray, motion by Ms. Messenger. And any discussion on that?
I think we're frozen on...
Yeah, it looks like we are frozen on... Yeah, we, Ms. Messenger made the motion, second was Ms. Bray. We can go ahead and vote manually. Unless you think you're able to get it. Got it, awesome. Let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the minutes. Technology, it's a good thing sometimes and a bad thing. And so that passes five to nothing. Ms. Bray says yes. Passes five to zero. All right, moving to recognitions. Mr. Barber, when I come up, we got three recognitions this morning.
All right, thank you, Mr. Board Chair, board members, and Dr. Wyson. October's Red Ribbon Month, and that includes Red Ribbon Week, which is October 23 through 31st. It's always a very meaningful month for our school district because of what it represents. You'll hear a little bit more about that. But it's also very meaningful to us because of the community partners that participate with us in acknowledging this month. So to tell us more about it is our district's community engagement specialist, Deborah Perry Gambino.
Good morning, Chairman Choat, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Wyson. Today, the Manassota Elks, on behalf of Manatee County Substance Abuse Coalition, will be accepting the proclamation for Red Ribbon Week. First, I'd like to recognize the Manassota Elks for their continued partnership with the school district, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but throughout the academic school year. The Elks National Drug Awareness Program is one of the largest volunteer programs in the United States, promoting a drug-free America, and we are very grateful for their support. During Red Ribbon Week, which runs from October 23 through the 31st, district staff will promote a drug-free environment by wearing red ribbons donated by the Elks Lodges. And schools will engage in numerous activities to promote this year's theme, Be Kind to Your Mind, Live Drug-Free. Joining us today, we have Dawn Gilchrist, aka Elroy the Elk, with Lakewood Ranch Sarasota Elks Lodge, number 2855. With her, Diane Davis, Manassota Chair of Drug Awareness, with Manassota Elks Lodge, 2734. And finally, PDD State Vice Chair of Drug Awareness, with the Bradenton Elks Lodge, and number 1511, Mr. Jack Cantwell. Before the proclamation is read, Mr. Cantwell will say a few words.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
My name is Jack Cantwell, and I am the State Vice Chairman of the Elks Drug Awareness Education Program. I'm also very familiar with the scourge of drugs on our society as a retired New York City detective with significant experience in both the city's narcotics division and the federal drug administration. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank the Manatee County School Board for your continued support and commitment to the observation of Red Ribbon Week and the issuance of this proclamation, as well as the distribution of over 4,000 red ribbons to the most vulnerable of our community as an important part of our education program. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, Ms. Foreman is reading the proclamation. Are you ready for that?
I won't do it as well as Ms. Perry Gambino would do, but her accent. This is a proclamation of Red Ribbon Week. Whereas excessive alcohol consumption accounts for approximately 140,000 deaths per year in the U.S. and is the fourth-leading cause of preventable death, underage drinking costs the citizens of Florida $4.5 billion, which continues to be one of the most used drugs by Manatee teens. And whereas tobacco use causes 480,000 preventable deaths, e-cigarettes have become the number-one drug used by Manatee youth and today's teens who vape are 30% more likely to use cigarettes in the future. And whereas the THC potency in today's cannabis is up to three times stronger than the cannabis of the 1980s, and the use of products that contain THC, like wax, hash oil, dabs, or edibles, are known to have concentration levels of up to 95%, which disrupt adolescent brain development. Whereas 109,000 Americans died in 2022 because of a drug overdose. And whereas solving today's complex health and social issues effectively is beyond the purview of any one agency or organization, and working collaboratively represents a key opportunity for communities to create significant improvements in health outcomes. And whereas for every dollar spent on substance abuse prevention, $38 are saved in societal costs. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to honor the memory of Enrique Kiki Camarino, a Drug Enforcement Agency officer murdered by a drug cartel in the line of duty, and serves as a catalyst to mobilize communities to educate youth and encourage participation in substance abuse prevention activities. Whereas we encourage citizens, business, public, and private agencies, medical, religious, and educational institutions to participate in Drug-Free Manatee's Red Ribbon Event honoring champions of prevention, October 26, 2023, at the Bradenton Women's Club. Now therefore, it be, be it proclaimed by the School Board of Manatee County that the week of October 23 to 31, 2023 shall be known, designated, and set aside as Red Ribbon Week, adopted with a quorum present and voting this day of the 10th day of October, 2023. School Board of Manatee County, Manatee County, Florida, Chad Choat, the third chair, Jason C. Wyson, Superintendent.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
Watch those anthems when you go out the door.
Safety first, you know what I say, safety first.
All right, Regina?
I couldn't help myself.
Okay, this week, the week of October 9 through October 13th, also happens to be National School Lunch Week across America, as proclaimed by the School Nutrition Association. And I just want to say, I know we're going to have some other words, but I just want to say, one of the ways that I acknowledge the amazing work that our food service people is, do is by being in the shelters during the hurricanes. We've got our food service workers in there feeding all the people who come into our shelters. And they're working in the, you know, during the school year and during the summers and during emergencies when we need them. So, but to tell us more about school, National School Lunch Week, is the Director of Food and Nutrition Services, Regina Tono.
Thanks, Mike. Good morning, everyone. Chairman Choat, board members, Superintendent Wyson. Very happy to be here to celebrate National School Lunch Week on this beautiful day. This year marks the 77th anniversary of the National School Lunch Program. For you history buffs, and I know there are several, it was established in 1946, actually as a way to make sure that America's youth was healthy and well taken care of. They realized that after the Great Depression, World War II, that there was a lot of malnutrition. So they actually considered it a matter of national security to make sure that they were feeding the nation's schoolchildren. So they also wanted to increase domestic agriculture consumption. So there's a lot of history behind this program. This year's theme is Level Up, and schools are offering a special menu, and every school will have some cool prizes for students. So we like to have a lot of fun out there during National School Lunch Week. Here in Manatee County, our amazing team serves about 46,000 meals a day and over 8 million a year. So they all work very, very hard and are very committed to our students. To help us celebrate today are three of our rock stars and one of our rock star principals. So I'd like to introduce Linda Bell, who's been with us for 25 years.
Hello.
Monica Smith, who's been with us for 27 years. Last but not least, Ollie Blaylock from Ballard. These two ladies are from Tillman, and Ollie's from Ballard, and she has been with us for 33, going on 34 years. And Principal Rudy Keizer, who is wonderful in supporting our staff and our programs. So, you know, we're very, very fortunate to have amazing staff that's out there every day serving our students. So thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Very much. Do you have a proclamation as well? The Ms. Bray is going to read for us.
Thank you all for being here and everything that you do for our schools. I know that's a task, and I've been through there during lunchtime, and it is a challenge. And the service years, I mean, add that up, that's quite a bit. So the proclamation will read, National School Lunch Week 2023. Whereas the National School Lunch Program has served our nation admirably for the more than 70 years through advanced practices in nutrition, education, and... Whereas the National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children. And whereas the School District of Manatee County's Food and Nutrition Services Department served more than 8.3 million meals during the 22-23 school year. And whereas the School District of Manatee County's Food and Nutrition Service Department served more than 162,000 meals this past summer. And whereas the School District of Manatee County's Food and Nutrition Services Department serves approximately 15,700 breakfasts and 31,000 lunches every school day. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the School District of Manatee County that the week of October 9 through 13, 2023 shall be known, designated, and set aside as School Lunch Week, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 10th day of October, 2023. School Board of Manatee County, Florida, Chad Choat, third chair, and Jason C. Wyson, Superintendent. Congratulations, and thank you all for everything you do.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's one lady that should have been here with us today, Ms. Chris. She's a, she's another lady that should have been here with us, but unfortunately, she couldn't be here today. She did 37 years too.
Wow.
Well, thank you.
We're going to have her here next year, so.
Great, thank you all very much for what you do. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, board members. By the way, the service total for that group of three workers was 85 years. We have another great recognition right now. This has to do with Ernie Withers. I don't know, y'all, many of y'all probably know Ernie. He's been in Manatee County since 1976. He has kids, grandkids, relatives, all throughout our schools. He's super involved in this area. He was longtime general manager for Mercedes-Benz of Sarasota. He's been Board Chair of the Manatee Chamber of Commerce. He's currently serving on the board at University of South Florida Sarasota Manatee. So he's deeply involved in all parts of our community. One other thing, he was a wrestler in high school and college and a longtime official of wrestling here in this area. He was telling me he's been in every gym in, you know, Manatee County and this whole area. But for his service to wrestling, he was inducted into the National Wrestling Hall of Fame in 2020. So he's had quite a life. But I wanted to tell you that while attending a chamber event at Pirate City on February 21, 2023, Mr. Withers went into cardiac arrest. The Pirates' medical training staff, led by Dr. Patrick, is it Demeo? They were able to perform CPR and use an automatic external defibrillator, AED, to revive him. And one week later, Mr. Withers threw out the first pitch at a Pirates training. So he has become just committed to spreading the knowledge of CPR and AEDs. So he's here today to make a special donation, and he'll tell us about that. So Mr. Ernie Withers.
So I get a little emotional after hearing the story because we live in it, it was quite an event. So I was at Pirate City and did suffer a sudden cardiac event. And just like I'm talking to you now, it was like someone turned a light switch off. And, you know, I was out there taking pictures, and I just collapsed on the field. Had no forewarning, no signs. And that's generally what happens with a sudden cardiac event. There's over 350,000 people that suffer cardiac events, and only 7% survive. And so I'm one of the lucky survivors because I happened to be somewhere, so someone had an AED. an AED. So with that, I started a foundation, Defibrillate Manatee. Proud to announce that currently, as of today, we've donated 27 AEDs in Manatee community area to nonprofits. Those AEDs generally cost between $1600 to $1800 apiece, so we've raised a lot of money for that. Today, we're making a donation of CPR AED simulator kit. One of the things I learned when I went and got CPR certified to teach CPR classes now is that ninth and 11th graders need to be taught in our school systems how to use a CP, you know, how to do CPR and how to use an AED. So I partnered with Christine Aristide from the American Heart Association. She's gonna talk to you a little about what's in the kit. But that's a $7,500 kit that the Defibrillate Manatee Foundation is donating to the school system so you can help train and teach our ninth and 11th graders how to do CPR and how to use AED. I'm currently co-chair with Christine for the American Heart Association River Walk that's gonna be held on November 18, and I hope to see a lot of you out there. So with that, I'd like to introduce you to Christine.
Good morning, good morning all. We're very happy to have Ernie as a co-chair for our heart walk. You say the name Ernie Withers in this community, everybody gets a big smile, but his story has been an enlightening piece for, I think, a lot of folks as he's come in contact with them throughout the community. So he's really wanted to make impact to the students, and especially as a former wrestler, certainly to the youth and sports program. There's been a lot of focus around Damar Hamlin and other athletes who have gone into cardiac arrests as young students, as young athletes. So we wanted to make sure that we have training materials for them. So you'll see on the desk area, you'll see we have inflatable annies, mini annies, and there's 10 in this particular kit, as well as 10 AED simulators, as well as a facilitator book, DVDs in English and Spanish to be able to teach a facilitator who can teach at least 10 to 20 students at a time how to perform CPR and first aid. This is what the focus of this particular kit is. So it will allow you to actually practice on in mannequin, and as you're pressing on the mannequin, it clicks to let you know that you're doing it correctly. We've all heard the song from the Bee Gees, "Staying Alive." Well, that's the music you should be thinking about when you're performing CPR at 100 and 120 beats per minute. So this teaches correct usage of CPR kits. And, you know, as an association, we want to turn bystanders into lifesavers, and by 2030, we want to be able to double the amount of people who feel confident performing CPR in the community. So this is a particular donation from Defibrillate Manatee for students to be able to practice. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So my hope, my hope is that, you know, with the kit, the skills that the kids will learn, they will learn hands-on, hands-only CPR and AED for adults and teens, so they'll learn how to do that. They'll learn to do adult CPR with breaths, you know, they'll learn what to do in a choking situation for adults and children. They'll learn how to do child CPR and how to use an AED on a child. They'll learn first aid. So we hope that this kit, we hope that this kit is a benefit to the Manatee County school systems. And thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one thing before you go, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes. Small token of our appreciation for your donation. Thank you, Regina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's great to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Glad you were with us.
As they pack up that, what a great three recognitions, really. I mean, we had some big weeks there, but thank you to all of y'all who were helping make Manatee County great, and especially this school system, of course. Moving on to public comments for this meeting, we have four public comments. Just want to make sure as we call you all up, you have three minutes for public comments. Above us is a screen where you can see your time go and how much you have left. And just so, to make sure, our policy is not to interact with public comment. So we've had, in the past couple meetings, some folks ask questions and wait for responses, but our policy is we don't respond to public comment. This is your three minutes to comment as you wish. So with that, first public comment is Mr. Michael Hartman, followed by Mr. Bowen Summer. So Mr. Hartman, come on up.
Good morning, for the record, Michael Hartman. I want to talk about two doors. The first door is the hardest door in the world to open, and even God himself can't open it. In Revelation 3:20, it says, "Behold, I stand at the door and knock. If any man will hear my voice and open the door, I will come into him and will eat with him, and they with me." John 3:16, "For God so loved the world, that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believeth in him should not perish, but have everlasting life." You may ask, "How may I believe?" Romans 10, 9 and 10, "That if you will confess with your mouth the Lord Jesus, and will believe in your heart that God raised him from the dead, you will be saved. For with the heart man believes unto righteousness, and with the mouth confession is made unto salvation." You just simply ask the Lord Jesus Christ, "I give you permission to come into my heart and my life and be my Savior." And the second door is the door of opportunity. Go to Manatee School District's website, click on District, drop down to the School Board, bottom left, Citizens Financial Oversight Committee, in the middle underneath COFC Charter. Individuals interested in joining the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee should email the School Board Agency Administrative Assistant. Opportunity to be part of what's going on and to help what's going on in the community. Sometimes not knowing is worse than not knowing at all. So when you have knowledge, that's power, and then when people say, "Well, what about the mill tax and all this?" Once you begin to see the effect that it has on the community, it's a real blessing. And I speak blessings on you all. God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bowen Summer, followed by Heather Felton.
Good morning. I'm very grateful to have the opportunity to come and speak to y'all today. I did, I did send out an email, just to kind of give you a heads up. You know, I never thought I would be here at a school board meeting, you know, talking about the minute details of a code of conduct. And just by way of how I got to this point, I liked the invocation said, you know, it was given the prayer there, said like, my world kind of revolves around, you know, this community. And that's where I find myself at, at this point in my life, you know, being involved in a lot of youth sports, a lot of kids. I've got four kids in public schools. I think I've got eight nieces and nephews are in Manatee County Public Schools, so this is the time I'm at in my life. The issue that I'm having with the code of conduct, you know, came by way of not anybody in my immediate family, but an instance that did happen last year, and it led me to kind of dig into this a little bit and ask some questions. And unfortunately, the more I kind of dug in, the more I realized, you know, how inconsistent it was. And it's really not in my, I have no desire to go back and point fingers and blame of anybody. You know, I just want to see what we can do to get better. I've reached out to other people in the community that have addressed this topic, and I have not found anything similar in Hillsborough, Sarasota County. I talked to a football coach over at Cocoa, and the deal is, is we're adding on additional punishment to student athletes and extracurricular activities in the tune of 180 days and 90 days above and beyond the suspension that they're getting right now. And I just, why? Why are we doing that? You know, I think I grew up, and I think a lot of us grew up in a different time of age, where, you know, we left a lot of those decisions up to the, to the coaches, or to the people that ran these clubs. They would serve their time, their 10-day, 5-day, you know, suspension, what it may be, and then we got them back with their team, and they figured out how they're gonna move forward from there. There's definitely things that are gonna be done where a student athlete or somebody can no longer participate on that team. Absolutely, that's gonna happen. It's heartbreaking as a coach to have to dismiss someone from a team. I've had to do it myself, and it's terrible. And so those instances are gonna arise, but the default position that administrators have taken, and again, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, I'm not interested in getting into specific details, because I think if we do, it looks very bad on us. I think it gets worse the more you dig into this. I just want to see, you know, us go forward and do better from here, and see the kids that have an opportunity, like, you know, some of these things are tied to drugs and alcohol specifically, where if you get, you know, caught with one of these, the default position, 180 days off sports, off extracurricular activities. You know what? We grew up in a time where someone got caught doing something bad, you almost wanted to push them to join a sport or an activity and get them with a coach. I mean, so it's really hard for me to wrap my mind around how we ever got this in. There's some things that may be tagged to like 10 years ago with a district athletic director that we had, that somehow it snuck its way in here. And again, I don't want to rehash why. I just think we can have a great opportunity to move forward and impact our student athletes' lives better going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Heather Felton, followed by Lawrence DePauli. Morning.
When I spoke to the board at the end of last year and submitted my resignation, I gave you all several reasons as to why that was, and tried to warn you that some of the policies within this state and district were hurting our students and staff. While there's little you can do about state law, the policies put in place at the district level in response to these laws are within your control. So the guidance the district gives the schools in how to implement them is important. As you continue through this school year, I would just like to remind you of the Hippocratic Oath to do, first do no harm, which should apply in government as much as in medicine. When setting policy and making decisions for our district, you should ask yourselves, will this benefit our students and staff? If the answer is yes, then please, please ask yourself one more question. Will this hurt any of our students or staff? Even one. If the answer to the second question is yes, then please reconsider that. Please remember to do no harm. And with my last couple of minutes, I wanted to remind you all that even though it's no longer considered politically correct to talk about, this is LGBTQ History Month. It is recognized throughout the country. We have young people who are trying to struggle through that right now. Tomorrow is National Coming Out Day as well. So please be mindful of that as well in your policies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last, Lawrence DePauli?
Yes. Thank you, good morning. The reason why I'm here is, real quick, we're talking about healthy children, healthy people. One of the things we noticed over the last 20, 25 years, people are not playing outdoors, the kids are not going out, they're on their phones, they're not going to the schoolyards. And one of the problems is the schoolyards are all locked. We just opened up a whole bunch of beautiful schools, Soggy, whoever handled that, beautiful, they put basketball courts in there, there's no free basketball to play in West Manatee. You have to pay in GT Bay Park or in the Y. I don't know why that is, but basketball's the number two sport in the world. There are six tennis courts there. They use about an hour a day. Right now, they just opened up the school, use an hour a day, five days a week, maybe two hours, that's it. There's 180 school years, days, there's 365 days, it's 185 days these schoolyards are not being used. So waste of money, because we have children that need to be out and playing ball, running track, getting out there. There's nothing gonna happen to them that can't be done, that they can be out there just playing, a pickup game of basketball, playing tennis with their mother or father, playing basketball with their father or mother, getting out there, just playing, running track. You've got beautiful tracks here. I've never seen anything like this, and they're not utilized. They're a waste of money right now because people are not out there. There should be people of all ages out there. We talk about heart attacks, well, people playing, getting out there, running, getting healthy, that's a big deal. Now, we got statute on books for 2023, it says, on 1013.101 Shared Use Agreement, that says that any school that receives 50% free or reduced lunches has to open up its facilities to the public for all uses after school hours or anytime the school's not in service. So it's about time we open these schoolyards up, let the kids play. My best memories, growing up, we're in a schoolyard, playing ball with my friends, making new friends, where, because that's where we could go hang out. We weren't on the streets, you know, you can't, everybody can't play softball, you can't get 18 people together to play baseball, softball, soccer. But you can get one or two people to play basketball, can get one or two people to play tennis, you can run track by yourself or with a friend. These are things that an individual can do, and that's what's lacking for a lot of kids is there's nowhere to play. Once they get places to play like that, it's a great move, and we need to do that for our community. There should be no reason why schoolyards are locked at this time. I understand the logistics for law, but there are all sorts of places where people can get hurt. People can get hurt playing football, soccer, or any other sport at any time of the day. There's no reason for children or adults to be able to walk into a schoolyard and play ball with their friends. With that, I appreciate your time, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you.
That concludes public comment for today. Moving on to item number 10, reports and presentations, Mr. Jensen, you're gonna come up and present the FAST Progress One Monitoring Results for Mathematics Assessment.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Chairman Choat, Board Members, Superintendent Ysong. As you know, in September, students throughout Manatee County took the first progress monitoring assessment in both ELA, English Language Arts, and Mathematics. And at the last board meeting, Dr. Breslin and I were here to share the results of the ELA assessment with you. So today, we're here to share the mathematics assessment results. As you know, the FAST Assessment, or the Florida Assessment of Student Thinking, is a computer adaptive test that students take three times per year, and that's really what makes it unique among other national tests and state progress monitors, or state assessments, is this is provided three times a year so that we can really gauge student learning and growth over the trajectory of an entire year. And this one that students just took in September is kind of our initial benchmark, so kind of where are students starting to start the school year. And students, when they take this exam, they're actually being tested on what the expectations are at the end of the year. And so when students take PM1, they're being assessed on stuff they have yet to learn, but this kind of gives us a great idea of where they're at, where they're at to start, and what they already know, and what they still have yet to learn. And as you can see in K through 2, we do this progress monitoring through Star Reading, Star Math, Star Early Literacy, and in grades 3 through 10, which we'll be talking about today, we do that through the FAST Assessment. The results of the FAST Assessments aren't just valuable to teachers who get, you know, computer dashboard reports that show them, you know, their individual student's progress, the skills their students are learning, and teachers can use that data to plan for instruction on a daily basis, but it's also useful to our parents. So I wanted to add this slide that one links to the parent guide, so that parents can understand how to interpret the results from the FAST Assessment. And it also, in the kind of introductory matter for the parent guide, lets parents know that for PM1, Progress Monitor 1, which is what we're talking about, and PM2, which students will take by the end of January, students may not yet be at grade level, but that doesn't necessarily indicate that the student is not on track to succeed, because again, the assessment really covers those end-of-year expectations. So we should see continued growth for students throughout the year. Kind of continuing along with how parents can use this information, access, and then use this information to assist their child. Parents have access to a family portal, so when their students take these exams, parents can log into Focus, and there's a link that will take them to the parent dashboard for the state, and then parents can see their individual student's FAST ELA reading results, the math results, retakes, EOC assessments, all there. And the reports are actually quite interesting and useful, I think, for our parents to help them support their students learning at home. So this is the first page of a summary report that parents can see online. The first part, that blue shaded region at top, kind of displays the student's scale score information, their achievement levels, so that level 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and descriptions about those levels. The purple shaded allows a parent to see a comparison to other students in the district, and other students in the state, and other students at the school, so how is my child doing relative to their peers, both locally and at the state level. And then the orange area contains some important notes for families that are kind of subject-specific and relevant to that test. The other part of the parent report, I think, is even more useful. It shows on the left- It shows on the left-hand side of this report, the category, so kind of what set of what set of benchmarks, you know, or groups. So like you can see up top, there is reading prose and poetry, and then the second one is reading informational text. They see how their student performed within that particular category using that box and whisker plot. And then on the right-hand side, which I think is incredibly useful, the parent receives in the green shaded area there, you know, some information about what that particular result means for that particular category, and more importantly, some strategies and next steps that parents can take with their child to help move their learning along in that area. And so I think if, you know, parents um, accessed this report and kind of reviewed those results, it might help them conceptualize some some things they can do with their student at home to help support their learning at school. So progress monitoring one gives us our initial, oh, yes, sir.
Well, before you go on, just I have a quick question about the parent stuff. I don't want to have to go back to it. Or to make the slides go back. Is this on Focus? Are we giving the parents access to this on Focus? Or is this something they're mailed or something you got to pick up from school? How is this given to the parents?
So there is a link in Focus. So if they they log into kind of the parent view in Focus, there's a link to the to the FAST portal. They would click and it would take them there. We disseminate the info, the curriculum team and the assessment team, disseminate the information to schools at the beginning of the year to share with their parents, and we provide that in both English and in Spanish. So parents, um, the schools can disseminate that information to parents. And then the parents have the instructions in order to log into to Focus and access these reports.
Great, thanks.
Um, so PM one, uh, which is what we're talking about today, is kind of our initial benchmark. PM two is going to be kind of our mid-year progress report of how our students are doing at the midway point of the year. And then at progress monitor three, that's really the the summative or evaluative piece of this process. So when we talk about school grades, we're talking about what eventually happens at the end of the year with PM three. And as I shared with you last time, this is the the portrait of school grade components. And these mathematic results factor into schools pretty heavily. As you can see in that orange shaded column, three hundred points of our school grades are directly tied to math achievement, both, you know, student proficiency at the top, learning gains, how students have learned year over year on their math. And then finally, for our students in the lowest quartile, how well they are learning and how how we're supporting those students' learning. Mathematics also plays a big role in middle school acceleration where students who are proficient are accelerated in mathematics to take algebra and geometry courses in middle school. And our middle school, um, our middle schools get points towards their school grade based on the number of students who are able to access those high school level courses while still in middle school. And when Dr. Breslin takes over here in just a second, she'll kind of walk you through those course progressions to identify how our our students move through those and also what impact that has on when we look at our assessment results, uh, what you'll kind of see happening in middle school mathematics courses. So. Dr. Breslin, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Good morning, everybody. Okay, so some of these progressions might seem familiar. We went over this last year, and and I'll talk about the growth that we saw for acceleration when we get to the data and the growth that we're seeing in student schedules this year as well. And so you see for elementary, their traditional math progression that that takes students to eighth grade pre-algebra. Um, and so that has been existing, ongoing, traditional, on grade level. And then you see to the right, the third grade accelerated. We launched grade three and grade four accelerated last year. So students in grade three received all of grade three standards. They also received half of grade four standards. Students sitting in grade four accelerated receive, uh, the remainder of grade four, uh, which was a big lift last year for our schools because it was the first year they went through all of grade four and then into grade five. Um, this year, they'll be able to receive half of grade four and all of grade five standards, which puts our fifth grade students in sixth grade math. So they're taking that middle school credit as a fifth grade student if they're on that accelerated track. Um, they then go into middle grades, into accelerated seventh grade. And then the end result is that you have more students equipped with the skills they need to access that high school course in seventh grade and then eighth grade. Um, if they're not, if they're sitting in seventh grade accelerated and they're not ready for that high school, because we know it's more than just the test score. If the student is is ready, um, is dependent on, if the teacher feels they're ready, if their parent feels they're ready. Um, but either way, um, they'll be more equipped to handle algebra as an eighth grader. And what you don't see here and in the next slide is how it progresses into high school. Um, because what we found through the years and my experience in working in high schools and middle schools is that we would get students through Algebra One and Geometry, and then we would see deficits in Algebra Two. Um, and although that's not a tested area in the accountability system, it is a needed area for student success post-secondary. Um, and so this really ensures those foundational skills are being met, um, being assessed and mastered before they move on. So when they get to Algebra Two honors, and then they start moving into the accelerated, either A, C, B, AP, or dual enrollment, they have those foundational math skills to lean on. Um, so the middle school progression, you'll see students starting in sixth grade or sixth grade accelerated. And it's important to note, just because you didn't take sixth grade math as a fifth grader, doesn't mean you can't hop on the accelerated path. Um, students can still launch into accelerated math once they acquire the skills they need, which is what we hope to see, is that more students are able to move in, um, to that algebra as an eighth grade, um, if not as a sixth grade student. And so looking at our PM results, uh, same way that we delivered the ELA information, you'll see it listed by grade level, state and district. The state is the bolded, district is non-bolded, and then you'll see those levels. And as Mr. Jensen just shared, this is a assessment on end of the year standards. And so for students not scoring a three, four, or five, that doesn't mean they're not on track to eventually get that three, four, or five at the end of the year. Of course, they'll have that mid-year measurement. Um, we do standards breakdown and analysis to make sure that our maps and materials are hitting what students need in the classroom. You'll see twenty-two, twenty-three PM one data, the first year we had the FAST assessment, and then our scores this year. And then on the right, Evan McCarthy and his team do a really nice job in putting this, um, for people like me that like the quick snapshot is are we moving in the right direction? And you can see overwhelmingly, we are moving in that right direction. What I want to point out is what's happening on one through five here. Um, so we started that third grade accelerated track, um, last year. Um, and our fourth grade accelerated. So we would hope to see from the district more students landing in three, four, and five in those grades. And you'll see, if you look at level three and you just take it down, you see a an increase in what's going on with three, fours, and fives in fourth grade, and then the fifth grade, and then the sixth grade. So we continually see, um, students moving above and beyond mastering the standards and showing that standards mastery. I also want to point out, you do see in eighth grade, um, a difference um, of what's happening in that progression. And that's because our students who were level three or higher last year are sitting in algebra. And so they're taking our algebra benchmark, which that data is happening this week. And in a couple of weeks, we'll have the results of that. Um, and so our proficient students are not sitting in eighth grade pre-algebra, and they wouldn't take this test. That is not the same throughout the state. Not all districts, um, um, accelerate students in that manner. And so you'll see that differential there in eighth grade. We do believe that we're preparing our students in the best way by by having them accelerate. They are capable, as they show us time and time again on those algebra middle grades, EOCs. And so just to summarize a couple of the things, um, that I shared earlier and that Mr. Jensen shared, most students will be in that level one or two. And we look closely at PM two, um, data to make sure that they are progressing. Um, we consistently consistently demonstrate stronger math scores than the state. Um, and we continue to outpace them in growth, um, which we love to see. And then what I mentioned about eighth grade students. Momentum Manatee, um, we're going to continue to grow and and capitalize on that. Um, and so just looking at how we go, um, how we progress students K through twelve. Um, of course, we use everything aligned to the best standards. The big M, um, if you remember, is a state tool that came out with the best standards, which really is the most comprehensive instructional guide I've seen the state ever create. Um, unfortunately, they only have it for for math, um, but it really is dynamic and is really helpful, especially to new teachers. Um, our curriculum maps, we use the FAST blueprint. In other words, um, start with the end in mind, which students need to know to succeed. We have our acceleration, um, opportunities, and later in the year, I know we'll do some presentations on uh, what the high school acceleration looks like. In other words, what are the advanced courses that students are able to take um, after they move out of the geometry course? We also do a lot of professional learning, just in time training. Um, the heavy lift this year, again, is in elementary schools. Um, they are equipping their fifth grade teachers who are teaching those sixth grade standards with a lot of extra professional learning. Um, hats off to them. Um, they have handled it beautifully, and and I think that they're willing to embrace it and put in all the extra time required to to learn those skills so they can translate it to their students in their classrooms because it really is what's best for those accelerated students. Um, and we also work in close collaboration with our surrounding universities and 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 involve our staff in instructional coaching. And so that's the summary of where we are for PM one, math. Um, any questions for the board?
Yep, go ahead. I don't, yep.
Good morning, Dr. President.
Good morning, sir.
So going back to slide number ten, could you explain again one more time, and you probably did, but I'm, I didn't follow it. Why, why is our, why are our grades in, at the, are our grades, are percentages at the district lower than the state? And that's because we accelerate students through, would you explain that a little?
When you hit seventh grade, we will have, um, a cohort of students in seventh grade who take Algebra One honors. And so those students don't sit for the seventh grade FAST. They'll take our Algebra Benchmark Assessment. Um, and then at the end of the year, they'll take the Algebra One EOC and count in our state data through that assessment. Um, not every state does that. And in fact, I will say, in talking to school districts last year, there are a couple districts that actually had students double assess, um, which we don't believe in. They take one state assessment, um, that that aligns with the standards that they're being taught in the classroom. And so that is why you'll start to see our state data. Now, I got to tell you, seventh grade, we have our, probably all our fives. Um, and some of our fours, um, from last year are sitting in Algebra One honors, but yet we're still tightly comparable and even above the state and our growth. And so that means our students who even weren't fours and fives are are being lifted up, which is fantastic to see. And then in eighth grade, that's when you'll see all our level threes are encouraged to go into Algebra One honors. Um, that's how we get that accelerated score for middle school. Your denominator is your level three student. So if you don't have them in, um, then then like, schools will not benefit from that acceleration, and the student won't benefit because it is important. The student benefits from that as well. Um, but not every district does that, and you can tell by their state data, their acceleration might be a little bit lower, and their eighth grade test scores are higher. We believe in the opposite. Let's lift the acceleration.
And we do that for what what reason? We we do things a little differently here to prepare them better for the high school math test they have to take, or what what's the rationale behind?
It allows them to progress into high school already mastering, um, Algebra One honors. They go into geometry honors. The progression in high school would be, um, Algebra Two honors as a sophomore. And then their junior or senior year, they have options. Some, um, might show that they've met the requirements to go into a dual enrollment course, and then they can partner with SCF or USF. Um, USF, they can take it on our high school campuses, and they take their college credit starting their junior year. And a lot of our students do that. You know, you'll see students that have met their AA requirements at the end of their senior year. Or they hop into your AP, IB, or ACE, um, advanced classes, um, maybe, um, AP Calculus. Um, but it's just the options to, and they don't even have to go into that college credit. They can do the pre-calc honors and and get one more year under their belt, and then their senior year happen to, um, a college credit option. Um, but it's really advantageous for our students to have that higher math skills when they're applying to colleges, which I'm in the middle of with my family. Um, it really is favorable to have those credits, whether you go to SCF. That's classes you don't have to pay for, or if you're applying to a a four-year university, the expectation is that students have taken those classes and done well in them.
And then doesn't it allow our students to take the math, required math test to graduate from high school a little earlier and just get it done? Like, um, can in ninth grade, do some of these guys take, some students take it? Yeah, so if they have advanced.
Students will will take it in in middle grades. That Algebra One is a graduation requirement. And and they can take it, be successful on it, and then concentrate on on other things.
Oh, really? So we have students that actually meet their high school graduation requirement in middle school?
For math.
For math, yes.
Yes, we will. Now, we still want them to take geometry honors. That is a requirement, that scholar diploma. You 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 still take one more state assessment. Um, but but yes, that Algebra One requirement, many of our middle schools meet that.
And so once you've knocked that out, and that opens up some of the other options that you were talking about for advanced math, if that's your goal to go down that road.
Just reaching higher every time.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you very much. That's all I had.
Ms. Frank?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice to see you. I have last year's, uh, PM three. Is it, and it's the same kind of testing, the FAST testing, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if I look at your slide that's on the screen, I would compare, I'm looking at third grade math from PM three. So now I'm going to compare fourth grade to this year. So that's going to show me what happened from third grade last year during the PM three to fourth grade PM one. Am I correct? And that would be following the student.
Following it. The only thing that would change, the student cohort would stay the same, but the standards would change. You'd go from the third grade assessed standards to the fourth grade.
Fourth grade, right. Okay. Because when I look at fourth grade now compared to third grade last year, the percent actually drops. So the test is harder, I'm guessing, for fourth grade?
Yes.
Than it is okay.
And they have a whole new set of standards that the students, um, and many of them, when they sit down for that first PM one test, they know that this is going to be, um, you're going to be tested on things you haven't been taught yet, and that's part of that that process.
Okay.
If if I can add, it's also, just keep in mind, it's the same group of students, but it's the last test on the third grade standards.
Right.
Compared to the first test on the fourth grade standards. And the scale scores at each level are also increasing in each grade level. So there's, and and again, that's why this is new, and all of these results are part of a three-year study that the Department of Education is doing to make recommendations back to the legislature, I think in twenty twenty-five, about how all of these comparisons work. So just keep that in mind. It's 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 by no means perfect yet, but it.
So fourth grade testing in last year, PM three, to fourth grade testing PM one is different than it was last year?
So the the fourth grade, um, test would be, um, the same, if you will. I mean, they will change the way they ask the questions, but they're asking the same standards-based questions on fourth grade PM one as they will for fourth grade PM three, as they did for fourth grade PM three last year.
Okay. Okay, so that would, so if I was want, if I wanted to compare fourth grade PM three to fourth grade PM one, those students are tested on the same?
I don't think you can. I I don't, those aren't comparable. You're going to have to wait till this year's students
Two.
Finish PM three.
All right.
To then look at last year's PM three to this year's PM three. That's going to be equal. So this is, this is not, this is almost like comparing fourth quarter of a sporting event to a first quarter of of this year. It just, they're not equal yet. It's not, it's not the same yet.
Right.
You know what I mean? Which I think is always, it's a little bit confusing with all this kind of stuff. Then
Right.
When you're presenting, like, wait a minute, this this percentage goes down or up or whatever. Um, we're really not going to know how well students do until the end. But I do, oh, I'm sorry, I'm taking, go ahead.
That's all right. That's, you're okay. So in looking at this slide, the state percent at level one is seventy percent, and we're at sixty-two.
Yes, ma'am.
But we have zero state and or district at level five. And compared to last year, what was that? Can we do that at all?
We we could. I would, um, need to to pull that data. I don't, I don't have it on me to see where we are.
I would just like to see, um, this in the school by grade level that I got from, uh, last year on math. It's third through the, and actually geometry and algebra as. It's third through the, and actually geometry and algebra as well. Because this is what I look at. Okay, from PM three to PM one, testing scores or students are gonna change, the way testing is done may change, but you would hope that you would see an improvement, I'm guessing. You know, I mean, we gotta go through the summer, but if I compare PM one to last year to PM one to this year, that would be, I think, something that I could look at, correct?
Absolutely, so that, I can provide that school-level data for you in mathematics. We won't be able to do quite the same thing in algebra and geometry because those students just take the end-of-year assessment.
Right.
They don't have the progress monitors throughout the year. And it's, I think, the closest apples-to-apples comparison we can kind of give you is what's on the screen here with that twenty-two, twenty-three PM one to the twenty-three, twenty-four. So basically, we're saying, where did students start the year in their learning last year versus where did students start the year in their learning this year? And you can kind of see that they're comparable and we've gone up in some areas. And the thing I'm most heartened by is just our students' excellence in mathematics compared to their state peers. I mean, when you look in like fifth grade, more than a quarter of our students are starting the year proficient and we're outperforming the state by eleven percent in there.
Right.
Like, I think that's very promising. So consistently, grade level to grade level, I think our comparison to our state peers is very strong in mathematics.
Okay, that's all I had, I just wanna compare apples to apples, that's a hard.
And again, I'll, if I can just add, the comparisons are just so challenging because it's so early in this process. So for example, even looking at last year's data, which was year one of FAST testing, the state's item bank that it drew from was very small. Items continue to be added to the bank. And so as those items go through circulation, as students take tests, as the state gets the data, then over time, they start building the validity and the reliability of all of these things together. And I think this discussion we're having is the same challenge that our principals and teachers have. There's a, this is a very transparent table, but we make mistakes if we read too much into what the data really isn't saying to us because the test isn't mature enough to say those things. Right now, where we're really at, at the classroom level, is student by student, what standards are not being mastered? And for students who are not mastering standards, how do we adjust instruction? And for students who are mastering standards, how do we accelerate their learning so that they stay engaged? So it's, again, we're in the spirit of transparency, we're putting all of this data out, but its generalizability at this point is fairly limited. But this is exactly what our teachers, our professional learning communities, our principals are working through right now as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Just real quick, from a parent of a couple of students that are accelerated, and I know yours are as well, like, I'm thankful the district does not make them take this FAST test, the eighth graders, et cetera, because it's just another test, right? And that's time away from other classes, et cetera. So I'm glad we don't, because we could say, hey, let's bolster our numbers in eighth grade and make these kids who are in geometry or make them in Algebra One. You know, my daughter's one that is Algebra One in seventh and geometry and is now dual-enrolled as a junior. And so you can easily say, well, let's make them take this test to bolster our numbers, but is that right for the kid, is that good on the kid and the student? So I appreciate that we don't do that because we absolutely could have better, way better numbers in eighth grade. And my assumption would be, we'd be five to ten percent more, higher than the state easily, if we did that. And so I'm glad we don't, to be honest. And I don't know whose decision that was from the beginning, but thank you. Ms. Foreman and then Ms. Messenger.
I am very proud of how we are performing in math in this district. I think it's just been exceptional. And PM one shows it, which, you know, if you can read anything into PM one. But do we have statistics, do we have the results of STAR? The PM one on STAR, not PM one, but whatever you call it.
So we don't have it in any context yet. So you can see some individual student data, but you can't see state data. It's not provided in the same readable format. Now, it will be, and Evan McCarthy's in the room, if I'm misspeaking, please correct me. We will have it in a format with some context, but it's just not, parents can view it, teachers can view it. But to look at it as a district whole view without any relationship to how the state's doing is really tough. So we use it for analysis on where students are, use it for instruction and we'll monitor, you know, PM two, et cetera. But beyond that, I think it has limits.
Are we able to use any of the results to correlate to the students who attended pre-K and who didn't? I mean, you know, just to see.
Yes, so we could do something similar to how we look at ELA data for grade three. Now, pulling back to grade one and two, let me go back and meet with assessment before I promise something that can't be.
Yeah, it's just, it's curiosity, but
I agree, yeah, it's a good point.
Interesting data, so, okay. And do we have any data that we can evaluate as far as, and I don't even mean necessarily from, you know, at this point, but are accelerated versus traditional math students, how they perform? I know they're taking different exams, I don't know if there's anything that we can use to correlate, but how are our accelerated students doing?
We could pull, carve out our accelerated students and run just by acceleration and deliver that to board members.
Like, show like what the passing of, like, what are their scores on?
Yeah, how are they doing compared to the traditional, you know?
Yeah, we could separate it.
Because I understand what's going on in eighth grade and appreciate that as well. But I would just like to see.
Absolutely.
But doing a great job, thank you, on math.
Teachers are doing an amazing job, they really are.
Ms. Messenger?
I don't know how much more I had to add, except Bray just had a question. First, I wanted to highlight that the comment about validity, because I think that's a real question mark here with this test. And that's, you know, a concern in itself that we're throwing at our kids and we don't even know if it's really measuring what it says it's measuring and so, and I was thinking, kind of to what Mrs. Bray was talking about when she was trying to compare the data, and I guess it'd be kind of curious to see at the end, when they did PM three, how much you moved out of each one of these buckets, right? Like, how many you moved out of one? How, because that's, that's the feat, right? It's not just getting them to a three, but how many did you move from that one? You know, or if you move them from a one to a two, hey, that's still a gain, you know? You know, that, that's, that, I think, is the more interesting data piece that we should look at at some point is what is that movement? Because that, that's important, right? Like, not that, oh, seventy percent don't know the standards that they're supposed to know at the end of the year. All right, that's okay, right? Of course, that's assuming the test is valid, whatever. But like, let's say that it is. Then that's okay right now. But what's not okay is if they're still a one at the end and there's a large percentage there that haven't moved, right? That's more of an issue than right now. And even if they stay in the one, but they move from a, I have to go back and look at the range of my, that thing, but move from a one hundred to a one hundred fifty. That's still movement, not enough movement, but it's still movement, right? So like, that, there's, there's, there's things in there that like, you, I think you really could compare, like, how much movement you're seeing, but it would, it's gonna have to be like the same test, but at the end of the year.
I agree.
Which is just more testing, which is. Okay, so when this first got implemented last year, I think it was last year, the acceleration piece, one of my big concerns was like the developmental appropriateness of this, especially like in the elementary school grades and then, and then even when it gets to the middle school and then the children are now taking a high school credit. And it might work for, I mean, Mr. Cho is saying it worked for his daughter, that's awesome. I just wanna make sure that if it is working, I wanna keep it, but if there's a child where it's not working, that they're not pushed into that and that they are available to not have to take that, they can take the regular one or they can not take the high school one, because there's also that piece of, parents may not understand, hey, my child's taking that middle school, in middle school, but it's counting towards their high school GPA. And if they waited a year and were more mature and emotionally ready, they might get an A in that class. But they're taking it in middle school, so they might get a B or C. That does count towards their high school and that's really more of a developmental appropriate thing. So I just, that was my biggest concern with this to begin with. And I guess I'm just looking for assurances that if a student says, or a parent says, you know, my child is not ready for this, they, maybe even academically they are, but emotionally, socially they're not, or whatever it is, they're not pushed into that and they can, if they go in and they go, wow, this is way, this is way too much. This isn't right, this isn't right for them, this format's not working, or whatever it is, that they can say, no, let's do the regular, whatever it is.
I agree. And so we've used the middle school accelerated courses for several years now. I would argue that the advantage of having accelerated option in elementary school is that more students will be prepared to accept the higher curriculum. But at the same time, as we know, there are many factors that go into whether students are ready to acquire more rigorous learning, not just the test score. And so we do have teacher input. Our administrators are very experienced of having conversations with teachers, whether or not the student is ready. There are off-rams, we do monitor progress throughout the year. We have an Algebra benchmark, we also monitor grade performance. We provide support, if the student says, no, I wanna do it, I wanna stay in, parent wants them to stay in, then we have supports to help those accelerated students. Even accelerated students need scaffolding, even accelerated students need tutoring opportunities. So we can provide that. And then if the student still isn't ready to accept the higher rigor at that point, then we reassure the student that they will get there, but there's other, I mean, we certainly can allow them to step down. But it's a, it's a joint decision, as with anything, that you're pushing a child to really stretching themselves.
Thank you, I think that was all I had, I just wanted that assurance, that makes me apprehensive. That was it.
Thanks, Mr. Tatum?
Do the eighth grade scores that we have down here, does that negatively impact our overall school score or our overall district score?
So at this point, it's a formative data, if you will. The grading buckets are based on PM three. And so we need to do our due diligence to move our eighth grade students along because we want them to be at grade level just as much as the students sitting in the accelerated classes. But at the end of the year, yes, we do hope to see that our eighth graders are showing proficiency.
And the students who are accelerated into courses like Algebra, they are also counting towards the school grade.
Correct.
So their assessment results at the end of the year are also, like, those students also count. So this is just a portrait of this particular test, but at the end of the year, we're looking at this and at the Algebra and at the Geometry EOC.
And the math bucket for the school.
But it's kind of a wash. If they were to be taking, if they weren't in those accelerated programs, they would be taking the normal test and they would probably score above a three and so it all.
They're all counting, they're just in different tests.
Different tests, got it, okay, thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You don't have anything else, Ms. Messenger, or you just, oh, you had?
Oh, did I not, I pushed my button, I apologize.
You're good. All right, moving to item number eleven, consent items, Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you, Chairman. I recommend approval of the consent agenda for October tenth, two thousand twenty-three. And board members, as a clarification, item number five is a personnel matter that contained two possible recommendations. And at this time, the recommendation is to place employee LE on unpaid administrative leave pending resolution of her request for a hearing on the merits. Thank you.
Thanks.
So moved.
We have a motion.
A second.
In a second, from Ms. Foreman. All those in favor of approving the consent items as listed on the agenda? Let's go ahead and vote, and that passes five to zero. Moving on to item number fourteen and new business. Item number one. We don't have any more public comment. No, that's just there if we go over the thirty minutes in the beginning. Yeah, but it's specific for the new business item. Yeah, so when we do that item, I'll call that one. Yeah, yep. So item number one, Superintendent Weisong?
Thank you, I recommend approval of the budget amendments for July and August two thousand twenty-three. Ms. Sellers is available if you have questions or.
So moved.
Yeah, let's have a motion in a second, then we'll have her present.
I'll second.
And Ms. Sellers, floor is yours.
Good morning.
Morning.
So this has been a busy July and August. This is the first financial presentation we're giving for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. So it includes the two months of July and August. And during that period of time, we had a lot of activity related to budget amendments, there were four hundred and fifty-three to get the year started. And that was affected by thirty-nine hundred chart strings in regards to items related to, that were over a million dollars in the general fund. We had two chart strings. This was related to moving the charter school capital outlay PICO budget from the district cost center to the charter school cost centers. In the capital fund, two chart strings that were related to the local capital improvement expenses, where we moved from southeast high school science building project funds from the construction activity to the ownership, owner services. In special revenue, we had two chart strings. This was related to S R three, learning loss. This was moving the paraprofessional salaries to new activity numbers. Now, related to the functions, that were also affected in that same manner. In the general fund, we saw activity in the facility acquisition and construction. This was related to the increase in the capital outlay PICO budget per the DOE schedule. And also, community services increased due primarily to establishing the hurricane emergency management budget. And special revenue, the activity we saw there was changes related to the original budgets for grants that were not awarded by the time the final budget was being established. And those related to, one, increase in the revenue for Title III, the ESOL grant, Sentry Grant and Perkins. Related to the area of instructional staff increase, we had the Twenty-First Sentry Grant, Perkins and Title III Part A ESOL. And that pretty much sums up the bigger items that had affected in the budgets for July and August.
Thank you, would you have Mr. Tatum?
Good morning, Ms. Sellers.
Good morning.
Would it be possible to get a projected fund balance for all the funds that we have? Every, every time we get one of these budget amendment briefings, and what I mean by that is, it seems to me, I remember there were five, remember back on a particular presentation in the past, there were five different funds. There was the general fund, the capital outlay fund, and there were three other ones, which I don't remember. Would it be too much trouble to just watch those funds, like, add it to this report that you just gave us and say, today, we're projecting the general fund will, at the end of the fiscal year, will have this much money and the capital outlay fund will have this much money? And then there were three other smaller funds. Is that a lot of work, or is that, I don't wanna cause?
We can see what we can work out in regards to updating that.
Just to kind of watch it throughout, like, hey, this is what it's looking like. If today were the end of the fiscal year, these funds would have these balances. And for me, at least, it would be interesting to see if we're on track, if those funded, those projected fund balances are rising, if they're getting smaller. Just to kind of watch how things are going through the year. As long as it's not hours and hours of work for somebody.
So we can do to add to this.
Okay, thank you.
That is the only speaker I have. Thank you very much.
Very much, guys.
So we've got our motion and our second, any other thoughts, concerns from the board before we vote?
No.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the budget amendment for July and August two thousand twenty-three. And that passes five to zero. Item number two, Superintendent Weisong?
Thank you. I recommend approval to advertise a notice of intent to amend and adopt school board policies and set a public hearing at the board meeting on November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And for the record, that would be policies two, four, one, seven, six, three, two, two, six, five, five, zero, and eight, four, zero, five.
So moved. I'll second.
Yep, we got a motion and a second. And, well, when are we looking at this, on the workshops?
Yes, this is scheduled to workshop on October twenty-seventh. And so we'll work through not just these four policies, but the last package that the board approved, and then bring all of that for a public hearing November ten.
Excellent. Um, I don't see any.
I'm going to request a speak here.
Yep.
Does this include the policy, oh, one, six, three, that we discussed?
That, that's gonna, I, I think you're gonna discuss that in new business with no, no recommendation.
Okay. Okay, I gotcha. Never mind. Oh, good.
Okay, um.
Actually, I'd request a speak.
Yep, go ahead, go ahead. Yeah, right, right, as the vote went up.
Is there any interest, based on the public comment that we heard today, of adding a discussion about the policy of how student athletes are disciplined?
So my question to that is, yes, I have an appetite for that. I just don't know if that fits in this policy, because that's a student, that's a code of conduct. So I'm, I'm, I guess I'd look to, to both, I know Mr. Chapman's doing the policies, but also Dr. Weisong, and if that fits in this, on the twenty-seventh, into this stuff. I, I don't.
I guess I'd adopt, Dr. Weisong.
I, I would prefer to have the opportunity to talk with Mr. Clark and the high school principals and the athletic directors, both about the comment that was made today, and then a couple of other recent communications from other parents, and have all of that kind of feedback put together. And then we may be able to do a future either workshop discussion. But I, I'm not sure that we can do all of that quickly enough to impact this current round of policymaking. But certainly, we may be able to do it in the next round, because I, I, I believe there will be future rounds of policy adjustments just because of all of the legislative changes from last year.
Okay. Because my thought was to make an amendment to add that policy to this. But based on what the superintendent said, we don't, I know the public would like to get it resolved quickly, but on the other hand, we need to do it right and have the time to do it. So I was just asking that question. That's all I had. Thank you.
Perfect.
So do we need to make a motion to add that to a future agenda item?
No, because the superintendent's asking for time to gather information before it's even discussed. They don't have that information to discuss. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to address something that Mr. Tatum said about us making, uh, uh, us fixing it. And it, and it may not get, need to get to that level at this point, I think is what the superintendent was saying. It could be misunderstanding, but I think what he's saying is, let me get the information, because that might be something that I can work out at the school level, and talk to them about it at the school level, and how that is applied, because that is a discretionary thing. So I don't think we need to be reactionary and changing policy that affects fifty thousand students if we can allow the superintendent time to really look into it, talk to the people that are needing to be part of that conversation, and give guidance, and, and from his management role. That, that's all I'm saying. Yeah. So I just want to make sure, like, a fix doesn't mean it has to be us, right? Because we hire him to, 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 to look into those things and fix those things. So that was it. Thank you.
I'm good. Yeah, it's just a question to start the conversation.
I agree. Yeah, no, it needs to be started, and I'll give my opinions when it starts. And, yeah, appreciate it. Anything else from the board? So we do have the voting box there for the approval of advertising a notice of intent to amend, adopt school board policies, and setting a public hearing at the board meeting on November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And that passes five to zero. Item number three, Superintendent Weisong?
Thank you. I recommend approval to name the Palmetto High School basketball court.
So moved.
So we have a motion.
I'll second.
And we have a second. And so we do have a public comment. So, Mr. Wilks, if you would like to come up and comment about this item?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Weisong and board members. We would like to name the basketball court after Kenny Ansborough. I know many of you know him. He is a great product of the Manatee County School Board. He's been a part of Palmetto since he was born. He went to kindergarten there. He graduated from Palmetto High School. I think it's also fitting that we named the court after him in the Butch Hughes Memorial Gym, since Butch did coach him and mentor him. So I ask for your approval.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any questions?
The, the one question I would like to know is, based on probably passing this, and, and when, when do you have the, or an idea of when you would actually name it and do a ceremony, do something? And we would love to be communicated on that, is something I'd say.
Right now, if we was to get approval now, we would try to push it for next year, because during the, during the summer is when they redo the floors. And we have the funds in order with our athletic banner program. So, and then whatever, whatever else we need, we would ask PA three.
Awesome. Thank you. Anybody else have questions? Yes, Ms. Foreman has a question.
Yeah, not, not for you, Coach Wilks. Thank you for bringing it to us. I would ask that the, that we have the, the board attorney address. What are the procedures? What is the timeline? Because my understanding is that this coach has not been retired from the district for more than five years. So I think there's a different set of policies, if I'm not mistaken. Recommendations from SAC and the principal. And then also, do we need a super majority on this?
Yeah, I'm glad Mr. Chapman briefed me as I came through the door today. The, yes, you have a policy on this. It's seventy-two fifty. And it's, it could be clear how it's written, and we, we just changed it, I noticed, in twenty-one. But it kind of separates out naming schools versus naming parts of schools. The, the thing that's a little vague that you're asking about is, is the vote, the, the number of vote that it passes, and that's in relation to a timeframe of the, of the person being honored, having been separated from the system by at least five years. It's, and it's a policy so that time has passed, and I guess nothing has surfaced on the individual that would maybe change your mind. So I've, I reread it today, and the, this is, of course, the naming of a, of just a facility within a school, not, not a school itself. And it, it, it's really written with the five-year separation, sort of seems to apply mainly to when you're naming a whole, a whole school after somebody. But it's, could be written more clear. And so if, if the board votes, and it's a super majority or more, it, it's going to clarify it one way or the other, that it's, that it's not going against the policy of the five years. Because what I understand, this individual has not been separated by five years yet.
Can you give us the, the policy again?
It's seventy-two fifty. Commemoration of school facilities.
I might be able to provide some insight into this, because I think, were you on the board when we named Parrish Community High School?
Yes, she was. Yes, she was. Made the motion.
All right. I would agree with Mr. Dye that the, this policy is sort of ambiguous. The first half of the, the policy seems to deal with the naming of schools. And then the bottom half seems to apply to the namings of portions of schools. And that's how it's been treated over the years. We named the, the, the court at Southeast High School was named for Bob Harder while he was still coach there. There's been lots of facilities named for people who, you know, have not been separated from the schools, and band rooms, stuff like that. So, as I said, this, this policy as a, as a general measure has, for the, the five-year, five-year separation, has been applied mainly to the naming of new schools. Now, one thing it also doesn't do here that in this policy is, is really spelled out, and it's more of procedures than policy, but the process that we go through for naming a new school is, is very involved. It's not, it's not included in this policy, but it starts with having a community meeting at a nearby school, a, a school near the property, and that's where we start accepting name nominations. There's, I think it's a, a three-month process where we're accepting name nominations before we even bring it before the board. So there's a lot more to namings of, of a new school than there is naming a portion of a school. The primary thing that applies to naming a portion of a school is somebody from the community has to come forth, from the, with the school or the school community, and ask for the, that portion of the facility to be named. And part of that process is to come to the school board meeting, which they did on June thirteenth, and ask that this been, be named in Mr. Ansborough's honor. And he retired in two thousand twenty. So, you know, it has, you know, only been three years. So, but as I said, there's, there's many, you know, instances of times when we've named, names in honor of people, or portions of facilities, and, and it could be somebody who died, you know. I know we've, you know, dedicated, you know, benches and other stuff for people who died within months of, you know, them dying. So anyway, that's how we've kind of tend to separate this particular policy. But obviously, I'll leave it up to you. I think the other factor is, e- either way, a super majority, you know, four, four positive votes would apply to either portion of the policy that you're dealing with, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see, was your questions answered?
Yes, it was. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Tatum?
Just wanted to make sure that I heard correctly, Mr. Athletic Director, is it Wilks, sir? Is that your name? Just that this is being funded not with any school board funds, right? It's the Athletic Association or whatever.
Athletic banner program, where we sell banners throughout the school, and that will more than cover the cost of the process.
Great, that's good to know. Just because the policy says that we can't use, as I read it, at least, we can't use any school board funds for these types of, for this type of activity. Thanks for clarifying that. That's all I have.
Ms. Bray?
Thank you for being here and making this recommendation. I did reach out to the community to ask, because I do not know this gentleman, to see how they felt. And there was nothing but very good comments about this coach and what he did for the community. And I am looking at the policy, and it does say that we can, a portion, naming a portion of a facility, such as a stadium, media center, auditorium. But went to Ms. Foreman, any employee of the district owner must be no longer employed by the district for a period of no less than five years. The only thing I worry about is that backfiring on us in the future. That's the only thing I worry about. It's not the integrity or the person. It's I don't want this to come back on us in the future. I support this, but it's just, maybe we need to look at that policy as well, Dr. Weisong, and see, because it looks like this policy wasn't changed since two thousand twenty-one. And I don't even know what the changes were then. That's my only concern. I'm supporting it, but I also had that concern of somebody coming and challenging that. So I just wanted to make that public.
Ms. Messenger?
Yeah, I just want to highlight one thing about this policy that didn't exist several years ago, which kind of created this. When we built three new schools all at one time, we had a lot of people come forward saying, well, I want to name this portion this, and I want to name this portion that before the school was even built. And so what we did, and what we added to this, is that there is a, that there is a process now, so that there is community, school involvement and support. Because what we'd get is one person go, I want to name it this, and then there was actually arguments, I want to name this, this, and then, and just. So instead, we said, okay, well, we want to do what the school wants. And that's why we changed the policy to what it says now, which is there, and if you see in our board documents, it's attached. It shows who signed off on it. It shows where the funding is going to come from. It shows all of those things, so that we get all that information, and that's all there, so that everyone can see. This, this is supported by the school, and that was the whole point, is us sitting here is different than the school, community, living with whatever the name is, and that's why we did change the policy to reflect, we want the school and the community to have a say, instead of it being a free-for-all, which could happen again when this board opens several new schools. But now there's a process in place that says, no, you need to wait until there's a SAC or a community group that can say, yes, this is a good idea. So I hear your concerns, but there is a process in place to ensure that it's what the school, community wants, and that, that to me reverberates of, okay, I can support that because I know that's what the school, community wants.
Again, I'm not challenging what the school wants. I'm, I support this. It's just I don't want others to come and start saying, hey, you broke your own policies. That's my only concern. But with the clause on the policy that I can see says that a portion can be named. A stadium, media center, et cetera, but I, I'm not arguing the validity of what the community wants. I just don't want to get into this big debate with the community that we broke our own policies. That, that's all. That's all.
Yeah, no, I mean, it, it's something to bring up, and I think it's something that, my thought is, it's something to look into with the policy. It definitely says five years in here, but then it goes on and says portions, and it seems to me like that five years stops. And then now the portions of a facility, stadium, media center, auditorium, now that's really done by the school i- i- in the SAC committee, and, and, and a process rather. So to me, when I read this, that five years doesn't apply to a portion of a school. It does apply to an actual school, et cetera. And, and to, to Mr. Dye's point, I think that's where there's some vagueness there, that we may just want to clean that up. But I think everybody may read that a little bit differently. You could probably argue both sides of it. But, yeah, maybe just something we look at eventually with our, with our policies. Ms. Foreman?
No, I would ask that our, that our board attorney and Mr. Chapman get together and work out the.
The language?
Work out the language, get rid of the ambiguity, and if it needs to be separate, new school, portion of a school, you know.
Yeah.
If they can clean that up, so.
All right, I don't see any other speakers lit up. So let's go ahead and vote on the approval to name the Palmetto High School basketball court after Coach Kenny Ansborough, and it passes five to zero. Yeah, congrats. That's, I'm going to put us in a, a, a five-minute recess for a quick. That's, uh, I'm going to put us in a, a, a five-minute recess for a quick bathroom break. All right. Welcome back. Uh, we are still in new business items. Uh, item number four, Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you, Chairman. And I recommend approval of the 2023-24 salary schedules for grandfathered teachers, 196 days and 216 days. Pay for, pay for performance teachers, 196 days and 216 days. And paraprofessionals, uh, AFSMI and the salary supplement schedule.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, any, you want to give us any more further information?
Certainly. Thank you, Chairman. So previously the board approved the, um, agreement with AFSMI, uh, and with the Manatee Education Association. This action item simply approves all of the supporting documents, the salary schedules and the supplement schedules so that our payroll department, um, can get all of the changes made so that, um, we can begin, um, paying employees their new rates and also then, um, calculating their retroactive, uh, payments back to July 1.
Great. Any question? We do have Mr. Tatum.
So, Dr. Weisong, is this a way to actually look at what our, our starting teacher salaries would be absent the bonus that they give via the millage? Is that a, is that, would that be a correct way to look at some of these charts or, or not?
Um, in some ways, yes. Just keeping in mind that, um, again, there are any number of, um, degree supplements, um, that go in there, um, activity supplements. Um, so yes, the answers are all in the salary schedule, but, um, it, it's certainly complex HR processes.
Right. But i- in the big picture, if you're a starting teacher, you just have a bachelor's degree, you don't have any extra things that get added on. It looks like you start out at $49,210.
That sounds correct.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much. That was my question.
Ms. Bray?
I kind of, the same thing. The starting salary, 49 to 10, is just coming right in brand new. And then, uh, but that's not including any millage or any supplements or stipends from any other, any other program, correct?
Correct.
Like if a teacher came in and they were a English teacher, but they're going to coach, uh, team, then they would be stipend for that as well, plus millage stipends as, uh, supplements. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I had.
One more question?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Dr. Weisong, do we give credit for teachers that come from out of state? How do we handle, like, someone taught in New York for 10 years? How, how do we handle that?
Yes. So the, so there is, um, there is experience credit given in the salary schedule. And again, that's part of the negotiated agreement depending on the, whatever position the employee is going into. And then those business rules are applied in HR.
Okay. Thank you.
Along those lines, I know we, um, we have been increasing the years, number of years we were accepting as we, in the past several years. What is, what are we at now as far as, I mean, I probably go look into it, but that just popped into my head after, with that question.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't have that number in front of me, Chairman, so I'll have to take as a follow-up item.
I just, I know that was something we were far behind in. Um, and we're losing good teachers, et cetera, that obviously, but I know, I thought, want to say it was maybe 12 or...
I think it's eight.
Oh, I thought we jumped to 10 last year. I don't know. We'll, we'll, we'll figure it out. If you can get that for us all, appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Will do.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, I don't see any other board members lit up to speak. So let's go ahead and vote on the approval of the 2023-24 salary schedules, uh, aforementioned. No, it passes five to zero. Item number five, Superintendent Weisong.
Thank you. I recommend approval to purchase session initiation protocol, or SIP, trunking services. This is a continued procurement number 24-0084-RG, estimated in the amount of $192,184.80 annually.
Thank you.
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. So, um, Dr. Weisong, I know Ms. Hanson's here. You want to go ahead and come up and explain item? Is that, I figured that's what you wanted to do?
For, for, for the record, I did pull this from consent. So that's why we're doing a presentation here, so.
Great.
Morning, Chairman Cho, board members, Superintendent Weisong, community members, district leadership. Scott Hanson, Chief Technology Officer. And with me today is Director of Operations, Mike Gray from Communications Authority. Just want to touch on a couple of quick things just for a few seconds and then certainly want to respond to Ms. Bray's, uh, questions. We, um, we have been using, uh, I think going back to 2018 when the initial RFP, uh, was awarded to Communications Authority. They're a local vendor, uh, located just down the street from a physical address standpoint. I would like to say a couple of things. If there was a vendor scorecard, uh, Communication Authority, uh, they're an A-plus. Uh, and I'm, I'm usually a pretty tough grader on vendors, uh, high expectations. Uh, they have been extremely responsive, uh, a joy to work with. Always available for, whether it's myself or my team. They ensure, you know, that the, the SIP trunking piece is a fancy way of saying local calls, uh, intra or interstate calls outside of the state of Florida, in the state of Florida, international calling, uh, keeping us in compliance for 911 and all the different statutes that have, have kind of come down, uh, over the last few years. Um, their portal, uh, that they have provided to our team, um, has been tremendous. And, um, that's, that's really all I have to say. I just want you to know as a board, uh, just an outstanding vendor. Price point, uh, for 50-plus sites, uh, for the dollars that we spend with them, um, it's a, it's a service. I know one of the questions, I believe, it's a multi-year contract, three years. Please understand it's a huge lift. This is not something that you, you change out each and every year. Minimum, Mike can, has been in the telecommunications industry a little bit longer than I have. So, uh, a minimum six-month to 12-month planning, if we were to ever switch, is required on our team's behalf. And I'll, and, and obviously their safety, 911 compliance, um, every phone. We have 7,000 handsets in our school district. Is a lot of management and a lot of compliance to ensure that we stay in compliance. So again, just wanted to touch on those things. So you have a little history of the school district and our partnership with Communications Authority. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Bray and answer any of her questions.
Sure. What stemmed this whole thing with me was the invoice. When I looked at the invoice of $16,015.40, it just has a emblem of a logo. And so I'm like, "Okay, where's this place at?" So I did research and I discovered that this Communication Authority, the other phone company according to the invoice, is located at a pine, gosh dang it.
Palm Brush.
Palm Brush Trail Number 401. So I drove to that address to see. It's a UPS store.
Sure.
And there are, there are 32 businesses with that same address, a different PO box. So with my concerns, I did reach out to our attorney and asked about, uh, look, what is the policy for doing business with just a PO box vendor? And from what I understand, some biz requires a physical address. I know other people that have organizations that are nonprofit that have to list a physical address. And then other businesses list a physical, and I could not find a physical address for this. So it's kind of unusual that, uh, we're doing business with somebody that doesn't have a physical site, no, uh, real, to me, is it a just call, service call? Is there a van that comes out? I don't know. Um, so it just brought up a lot of, uh, questions for me. So I, of course, did research through the company and it looks like it used to be AT&amp;T or they are doing business through that. And then it was, um, uh, what else was it? Uh, oh, there's another company that's listed with this, uh, vendor named Mike Gray, Astro RAL LLC. And when I do the more research, Astro Companies LLC, same PO box as the Palm Bu- Palm Bush Trail. So I don't know if, is there affiliation with all of this? And it listed the, um, people involved in the, uh, organization as another Ray, a George Ray, a Mike Gray, and the officers of this company. And this was, uh, Astro Companies LLC. When I did do a search on all of that, uh, did it just on Communication Authority? And again, another question. Generates approximately, uh, generate, operating for approximately seven years, Communication Authority is estimated to generate 167,790 in annual revenues and employs about five people at this single location. When I see the 167,0790, yet the ask here is 192,000, plus we've already paid 57,000 in prior years, it was 209, 210,000 dollar range. So that is like, okay, what's going on with the difference in the reporting and the difference in what we're actually paying this vendor? So it's just one of those things that caught my attention because the invoice didn't have a mailing address. a mailing address, that's, and I don't see a contract other than the general contract that we have, that we use for all of our vendors, I don't, you have all of that data, I don't, all I see is what I can look up and what's provided to us as a board. So it just rose a red flag for me when I saw that, so.
Sure, great questions, and I'll ask Mike Gray to come up, Director of Operations, many of those questions are specifically about the company, and I think he's better posture to answer those and respond to those, those questions. We, we do have some additional, you know, there's a cybersecurity statute, and there's obviously some things that we don't want to place in public board work for the safety, telecommunications is one of those, from that standpoint, and I know there was some, as we were working through changes and, and positions and getting the template contracts worked through, which is very normal in the time of transition with, with staff members, I know that was one of the items or of a concern. So Mike, if you would, come forward and...
Good afternoon. Hi. Hi, to respond to your questions, we are a regulated telecommunications carrier, and we have been in business for over ten years. One of the precautions that we take as a regulated carrier is that we do not publish the addresses where our team works, because there are people out there that will be aggrieved, and they will ask the internet, who owns this phone number that called me? And they will then get an answer back, which is usually erroneous, and it might have our name on it, and people will call and they will threaten our staff, and they will say, I'm gonna come over there and I'm gonna do such and so to you. And so for that reason, we use a PO box for our mailing address, and that is our published address. We do have a physical office in Manatee County, we do have employees that work in Manatee County, the school board staff comes to our office to pick up equipment on a regular basis, we work together all the time, so please be reassured that we do have a physical address, a physical office here and a staff, we just don't publish that information publicly.
I can understand that kind of analogy, that you want to protect a staff on different aspects of the company, I'm not asking for the staff's address. It's just, when I saw this, it just rose a lot of red flags for me because of that. Working in accounts payable and purchasing before, in a prior career, I never processed an invoice without the proper address listed on it, with the proper PO, with the person who signed off on that, I don't have that information, so it's like, okay, what is going on with this company? I know that...
So that...
And also that you have...
Ms. Bray, that, just if I may interject, that's the quote, just that outlines the services and obviously ties to the contract that was routed through legal. We do obviously have a process in the district when we get the monthly invoice and there's sign-off, and we obviously check those to make sure that we're adhering to those price points that are listed there, but that, that was just simply the, really the quote that just outlines the high-level pricing.
Right.
That is a continuation from the, the former RFP, that was awarded in twenty-eighteen by the board.
Is that something that I can get?
Absolutely.
I would love to see that.
Absolutely.
Also, I understand you have another communications, Terranova Telecom, Inc., that also has the same address, from what I see, so you're operating several companies out of the same PO box, I'm guessing?
Well, I'm...
To protect the security of your employees and what you actually do, I can understand that if there's somebody that made a call, there was a threatening kind of thing, and staff had to deal with that, your staff had to deal with that, I can understand protecting that, but I don't think anybody would actually, you know, say, somebody called and, I know from, I understand from my briefing, this is a E-nine-one-one, enhanced nine-one-one service, and talking to the county, they provide nine-one-one service to the district through their networking. So it was a little confusing to me that, okay, is this, and then too, searching, our Gintex is also an emergency system that we use, that identifies the emergency, what the room is and all of that, but I'm guessing, okay, this is just for the phones, for the E, for nine-one-one, and/or any kind of equipment, that we need to move a phone from one place to another, that's something that your staff does? Is that, am I a good analogy of that?
Well, we are a regulation, regulated telecommunications carrier, and we provide telecommunications services to the district, so that would be the ability to place local calls, to receive local calls, to place long-distance calls, to receive long-distance calls. It does include, the E-nine-one-one is deprecated, the current mechanism is called NG-nine-one-one, next-generation nine-one-one, and we do provide that directly. We work in partnership with Manatee County, but Manatee County is the agency that responds to those calls, but you still need a carrier to get that call to the county, and that is what we do.
Okay, okay, okay.
And the strategic system is a completely separate system that addresses a completely different set of circumstances or scenarios that could occur on our campuses.
Right, right, I get you. I just, I just had all of those concerns about it, when I pull up and there's thirty-eight companies at this same address, okay, what's going on here? And then that's when I drove out, and I'm, okay, so the PO box, and when the dollar doesn't match the ask, okay, that's a difference of, gosh, roughly forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars difference in what's on our agenda and what your estimated generation is. So those were the concerns, that's why I pulled it off the consent, so the other board members would know that I did have concerns with that, and I did talk to the county, and I see what you're, where you're coming from. It's a little clearer to me now, however, I think that in the future, I would actually add your address to your invoice, because this is what the community would see, and that's what's attached to our agenda, is this, and to me, that was the red flag, that it didn't have an address, and I understand a PO box, even a PO box would have been, at the bottom of this, would have been a little more comforting to me anyway, but that's why I pulled it from the agenda, and I don't know if any other board members have questions
Does anybody else have any questions on this item?
or not.
All right, I don't see anyone else let up.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
No.
And so we had a motion and a second already, so let's go ahead and vote on the approval to purchase the SIP trunking services? And that passes five to zero. That brings us to item number fifteen, new business, so no superintendent recommendation, and item one-hundred-and-fifteen is board discussion regarding board operations. Ms. Bray, this is something that you added...
Yes.
...to the agenda, so.
I did.
For yours?
In our policy, policy zero-one-six-three, I will read it because it's kind of short, the chairman shall preside at all meetings of the school board. In the absence, disability, or disqualification of a chairman, the vice chairman shall act instead. If neither person is available, any member shall be designated by a plurality, polarity of those present to preside. The act of any person so designated shall be legal and binding. I brought this up because of the last, the Friday meeting that the chair was not able to be here, was traveling, and I presided over that meeting in his absence. So I want to make a motion, I want to move to advertise, of intent to amend and adopt a school board policy in bylaw zero-one-six-three, and setting a public hearing at the board meeting on November fourteen, twenty-twenty-two, to amend this policy to, that the chair be in person for meetings, if not, then the vice chair or, and/or the next person in line would take that authority.
So you have a motion on the floor. I have a question, doesn't that, isn't that what this says already?
I think she's talking about making sure that whoever's presiding is actually in person and not, but video, I think that's...
I don't think we need to discuss it unless there's a second.
Well, I'll second the motion so we can discuss it.
Okay, so we got, we got a second, so I guess my question is, what is the difference in what you're proposing than what it already says?
Right.
It says, in the absence of the chair, vice chair shall act, and if neither there, so what are we changing? Maybe I'm missing that.
I'm not sure how the wording will be phrased, but this was brought to my attention that the Friday meeting that we did for arbitration for MEA, that the chair had intended to preside over the meeting while traveling and not in person, and I believe that in the absence, there shouldn't be any exceptions to that.
And there wasn't, because I didn't reside.
The intent was that you were, that I was told that you were gonna preside over the meeting...
Right.
While you were driving.
Until this policy was, no, I wasn't driving, I was in, I was in hotel, but until this policy was told, and I said, absolutely, you can go ahead and preside.
Okay.
So I, so I guess I don't, that's my question, is what are we changing in the policy?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I had done some research on Florida statute when we were working on our legislative platform about the attendance at meetings, and the, it is a totally different issue, but I think what Ms. Bray is asking for, correct if I am wrong, is a definition of, you were, you were in attendance, okay? Okay, and that's, and that meets statute. If you, if we had had too many people absent, we wouldn't have had a quorum, okay? And that's, that's statute. What she's asking is that the chairperson, and this applies not just to this board, but future boards, that the chairperson must be physically present. There is a difference between physical presence and attending, you know, and, and I, I don't object to that, I recall a Citizen Financial Oversight Committee meeting where the chair attempted to preside with very poor signal and on the road, and it was a disaster. So I, I fully support that the chair should be in attendance, and I don't see anything wrong with defining that the chair shall preside at all meetings of the school board, and, I don't know, somebody else can do, wordsmith it, but, and be present.
Physically.
Physically, physically present at the meeting, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Messenger, you were let up to speak, and then Mr. Chairman?
So, in twenty-twenty, when the state shut down the schools, we still had to have board meetings, and I was chair at the time. I don't know if you remember watching those meetings, but I was virtual running those meetings.
Could have been here all by yourself.
And they've progressed just fine with me being there virtually. So I had no problem with our chair, being the chair, running it virtually. I've seen it done, I've done it, I've lived it, not to mention what COVID taught us was that to run a modern business, you have to have that availability, it's a cost-saving measure for businesses, because instead of flying someone to Switzerland, you can get on the computer and have your meeting that way. So I see no reason why we need to change this policy, and I actually think he should have run our meeting, whether he was in the room or not, and if he felt as if, I can't run this meeting, I am too hamstrung with whatever's going on around me, then he could have said, oh, I can't do it. I don't think this policy says he has to be in person, which I think is your concern, but I think that that flexibility is important with where we are in the world today. I think if there was a moment where, a time when the chair continuously wasn't present, and it was becoming cumbersome, then that's a discussion for the board to have in that moment. But that's not what this was, and for a one-topic agenda that was very simple, it would not have taken anything for him to run that virtually. I ran entire agendas virtually, and we did great doing it, we got through it without a problem, and so I don't, I just don't think this is reflective of where we are in times if we are to change it, I don't think this is like, even like a modern business move, like, I think it's actually moving backwards in some ways to do that. It, it's, it, it's... It just, it, to me, is not a wise decision, and I'm gonna also think about future boards, right? Okay, so it, now you're hamstringing a future board and giving that board less flexibility on the duties of the chair, because that really is a chair determination, really, the chairman can say, gosh, I don't think I'm gonna be able to do this one. He, he could have done that, but he felt like, oh, I can do it, which, for one topic, I think he could have, honestly, and, and even if it was longer than that, I think he could. He's more than capable, and I've seen it, I don't really have any desire to hamstring future boards into not being able to have that flexibility in the future, just because we don't know what's gonna happen either. Putting that in our policy could be damaging if something else were to happen, so I'm not in favor of changing this policy, I think the flexibility is important for our chairman, and like I said, if there was something that was, if there was a chairman that, that was a continuing issue, then, then the board deals with it then, but that's, that's not what's happening here. I, I just think this is a step backwards, I just don't think this is a, this is a good business decision.
May I?
I'll defer to her, I'm, it's fun to listen.
The, the difference between the COVID and now is that you all were virtual, there was nobody sitting here in this room.
That's not true. There was no one in this room.
But the point that I would like to make on this is that it is better to have the person presiding over the meeting to be in the room as opposed to be, not be here, because there are things that go on in this room, there are people who want to speak, there, you can recognize the chair, or the superintendent can go, whoa, I need to talk about this, you know, so it's, I think it's a far more effective meeting to have the chair, the person presiding over the meeting in the, physically here, as opposed to being somewhere else, so, so I'm, I'm gonna support Ms. Bray's motion, you know, so.
Mr. Chairman?
I actually just have some questions for Mr. Dyke, I'm just curious about how, so to, to be able to vote, we have to have a, on something, do we have to have a quorum present in the room, or is it just, is that, what are the rules on actually taking a vote? Do you have to have a quorum in the room, or can?
Yes, the current law. You have to have a quorum in the room.
So...
That was suspended during COVID.
That was suspended during COVID, so then...
Which we'd like addressed.
Yes, I would.
So then, but Mr. Choate and myself were at the last meeting, that one I had a meeting, we were, we were dialing in visual, or on video, on a video call, so do our, our votes still counted, I assume, right? Because we voted, okay, so, so, so we're in a, so as long as there's a quorum present, all five of us can, can vote? If there had not been a quorum present in the room, then no voting could have taken place, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that wouldn't be a valid meeting.
That wouldn't be a valid meeting, so you have to have, so the, the current law states that you have to have a quorum in the room, is that right? Okay, what if there are contracts and things like that that need to be signed? It says that the, the person acting as the chairman, the act of any person so designated shall be legal and binding, does that person, let's say there were some contracts that had to be signed last time, would, would we wait for Chairman Choate to come back? Would the designated person be signing those things, or what would happen at that point?
If it's a valid meeting... If it's a valid meeting, it doesn't have to be signed right at that moment. If, as long as the board passes the action, the signature can be obtained afterwards.
Okay.
And it could even be through electronic signature, or something like that.
Okay.
So, and then there, as, as Ms. Forman's pointed out, there's exceptions for, for bodies that are over larger geographic areas and have more, multi-members, that are starting to allow them to not have to have a physical quorum. There's some exceptions to the, to the sunshine law on that.
Okay.
But those don't, those don't apply to school districts right now.
And then as far as the word plurality goes, in the absence, disability, qualification of the chairman, the vice-chairman shall act. Instead, if neither person is available, any member shall be designated by a plurality. So if I remember what that word means, it means a vote of, not a majority, but a vote of more than every other vote that might take, take place. It's like a plurality of, of, of 10 could be four and three and three, but the plurality is four, so whoever got four votes is, wins, is that what a plur-? I think that's what a plur- plurality means. More votes than anybody else, but not necessarily a majority. You're a lawyer, and so I'm putting you on the spot.
I sort of interpreted it as a majority.
Okay.
Of those present.
Majority of those.
So if you, if you were missing your chair and your vice-chair, then the other three would vote of who gets to chair.
Right. It would be impossible to really do a plurality in our situation. For bigger boards, there might be.
Sort of a majority of those that are actually there.
Majority of those that are actually there.
Yeah.
Do we want, do we want, do we want to say that, and, and a majority of those actu-? I don't know. We're kind of getting in the weeds here, okay? All right. Those are the questions I had, I was just curious about. I actually heard what Mrs. Messenger said, and actually heard, I mean, my ears picked it up, right? So, I understood what she said, let's put it that way, that's probably the better words. And I agree with her generally, I don't like going backwards in technology. I think that we're moving into the Zoom world, whether we like it or not. But I do agree with Mrs. Forman's thoughts that running the meeting in this room, if there are, maybe someone's being disruptive, and, you know, you are, the chairman is typically the one who would ask the police officer in the back to remove somebody, or would, would kind of understand the ambiance that's going on in the room. And if you're sitting in a hotel room, and there's things going on in this room, and you're listening and hearing, and do you have like an electronic gavel or something, you're banging, I don't know, you know? I, I kind of go along, I kind of see the point that having someone in. It's not that you can't be present and participate, whoever the chairman is, it's just that the ability to control this room from a hotel room in Switzerland might be problematic. So I will support having the person that's running the meeting in the room, so.
Uh, Ms. Bray?
Okay. Couple of things to Ms. Messenger's point. I don't think this is going backwards. You had to go through a very troubling time with COVID. The whole world had to go through a troubling, troubling time with COVID. That was a a situation that was basically put on us. To do business, you had to do something, you had to get creative, you had to do all those things. My, I mean, this policy did not change in 2020 to do meetings virtually, and for the chair to manage the meeting virtually. So we didn't change the policy because of the pandemic. This policy hasn't been changed since 2013. My ask is generally in the physical pres- absence of the chair. Because, again, you cannot get the climate of the chamber virtually. I was on the CFAC committee when the chair was trying to do the meeting. I was the vice-chair, and it was, "Okay, I'm losing my connection, I'll hand over the gavel to vice." So I ran the meeting, and then they would call back in, and they would take, it was a disaster. So, to me, this makes sense to update our policy to saying that the chair, if they're not physically present, then the vice-chair, and I don't care who the vice, at the point, whoever it is, would actually run the meeting. And then two, to Mr. Tatum's point, if something's going on here, it's up to the chair to control the climate of the room and to ask if somebody needs to leave. And I did a workshop from a hotel when we were discussing the Palma Soul, Sola, uh, school. I came in, I didn't know how many people were in the room, I heard how many people were here. So, to me, this policy makes sense to change. I mean, we can change unless emergency protocols are in place. Hopefully, that never happens again like it did. That's a whole nother topic to discuss, but I think having a, uh, changing a policy to add physically absent that the chair, uh, vice-chair, and then two, if there's, we could add on here to Ms. Messenger's point, unless emergency protocols are in place. Well, that would be, no one would be in this chamber, in my opinion. So, thank you, Mr. Tatum, for your support, Ms. Forman, I thank you for your encouragement at the last meeting to do that. It was a one-line item, but it brought up the bigger picture to me, and to, to others outside of here and in this room now. So it's just not us on this board, it's getting feedback from others in the community. So, with that, I'm going to stay strong with my motion.
Do we need a motion, uh, reread? Or is it, is it?
It's on there.
I'm sorry, do we have other? Ms. Messenger, you were led up again?
Yeah, I, I know, there's already three votes, or, like, I'm just shouting into the wind at this point, but I just want to clarify a few things that were stated that were not quite accurate. First, when we did shut down for COVID, there were people in this room. There were board members that sat at this dais, and I always made the commitment, I'd sit wherever, I'd be wherever the majority of the board was. There were some older board members that did not want to do virtual, and they came and they sat here, and there were other staff that sat in here. We also held meetings virtually from the, the studio in the PSC, and had satellite locations where people could come in and talk. So, and I would, couldn't see all those different rooms, there were several different schools that we set up. People could come and talk at Southeast High School, they could come and make public comment there. People could go to a different school and make public comment, and we received all of that, and I did not sit in the room for any of those other locations where people were, and it worked great. And that was still virtual. So if anything, you're right, COVID taught us that we can do this virtually, and that I just, once again, think this is a step backwards. And you're right, we didn't change this policy, that's because the governor ordered us to do what we did. So, um, we didn't have any opportunity to, because we were told what to do. So that other language does not need to be added, because if such a thing were to happen, the governor, I'm sure, would once again tell us what to do. But, one more time, this is moving backwards. That is it, thank you.
I will say, and I don't think that there is a reason to change it in 2020 because the word physically present is not in there. And if it was in there, I think you then would have to change the policy. So I do agree that this is not allowing us to be as flexible as possible. I don't personally care if I resided over that meeting for the one meeting or not. When it was brought up, I said, "That's fine, let the vice-chair do it." So, so I don't particularly care, from a personal standpoint, if I'm presiding over it or not. I do think that this limits us in our abilities, and we, we could potentially, and hopefully we never do, see precaution, see a result from having physically present be an issue. And I could definitely see if there was a chair that was, this was continually happening, and this was an issue, absolutely, because I agree with everything everyone is saying, that to be present physically here is way easier and, and more advantageous for us as a board to run physically here than outside, 100%. I don't, I don't disagree with that at all. I disagree that that meeting was any kind of pretentious meeting that couldn't have been done outside. But again, I didn't care to give you the gavel, that's absolutely fine with me. I do believe, though, that changing this policy for future does handcuff a little, a little bit. And it is, to me, if we had the, in the physical presence, then if a COVID did happen again, hopefully it never does, um, we would have to change our policy and come back and look at this, because now the physical presence is in. So I do think it is, it is limiting us a little bit, but I do agree with the arguments that in-person is better, absolutely. And so, but, but I, I think for us, for me, to, for the policy, to change the policy so that we potentially could see some issues, and we're causing those issues on ourselves because of the language. I think the language is fine now, as it is. So, Mr. Tatum, you were led up to speak? Excuse me.
So what happens, let's say there's a category five hurricane that comes through here one day, and there's, the infrastructure is just wiped out, this building is, there's no electricity, there's no plumbing. I mean, it's really coming here is actually dangerous, there are trees all over the road, there are flooding going on, and we feel like we need to have an emergency meeting for our schools because of shelters, or who knows what that emergency meeting might be, might need to be about. How would, how would we do that? How, how would we go about having that kind of meeting? If, if getting, even getting all five of us somewhere together, I mean, this is more for Mr. Dyke. Let's say that it would be dangerous, actually, for all five of us to try and meet somewhere in a quorum. In theory, we couldn't do any business according to state law, is that true or not true? Or is there some suspension of law that would happen? You know, so, or what, what would happen at that point? I mean, you could, you, you know, you go down in Fort Myers, look what happened down there. Anyway, that was my question for you. What would happen at that point?
I'd rather get back to the better answer, but the, once an emergency is declared in the county, you're under a different set of rules.
Right.
Okay.
And I can specifically get back to you with, with the authority to how you operate in that condition.
So you feel like that if there, if there were that kind of emergency situation, that provisions would be made, that provisions already exist for us to do business in, in that extreme kind of emergency situation?
Yes.
So that if we put a policy in that said, "Be physically present," that in the case of an emergency, there are other protocols that would then happen, which would relieve of, relieve us of our policy requirement to have somebody in person?
While it's, while it's in a declared emergency.
While it's in declared emergency.
Then you go back to your regular.
Okay. So the policy is the policy, except when it's, there's an emergency situation, then there's a higher level of protocols, which would allow us to maybe meet virtually, and then once the emergency was over, we would go back to our local policy, which says,
That's correct.
the person acting as the chair has to be physically present. That makes me feel.
I'll give the board what those are.
Yeah. That makes me feel better about going along with this motion.
And, and adding that language is part of this amendment is to, unless other emergency protocols are in place. If we have a county issue, and the county, uh, puts an emergency in place, and/or the governor puts an emergency in place, then we would have to fall back on those, uh, policies. But for just general meetings, and again, if we all came in virtually for a regular meeting, that would not be allowed by present law, according to what you said earlier. So to me, this is just a, and physically, uh, absent, or physically present, whichever way we want to word that, the chairman shall pres- physically be present to preside at all meetings of the school board in the absence, then it would go on, unless other emergency protocols are in place. So that's kind of where I'm at with it, so.
And likely, even a major hurricane, there would be other board facilities in the county that would be fine to meet at.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. But if that chair or had evacuated, that, then they're physically gone.
They're physically.
And if the vice-chair, if, I mean, obviously we go to what if song.
Oh, yeah, you could do that.
You know what I mean? We go what if song. Again, I agree with the premise of, of what we're discussing with, it is better to be in person, 100%. But I do think that this, for us to create a policy and then say, "Well, then we got to add all these exceptions to it," when we have a policy that has the exception written right into it, I just think is, is adding some things we don't necessarily need to. But we are voting on, the movement right now is to vote on the advertising of the intent to amend and adopt at the board meeting on November 14th, 2023. It's not necessarily the language that's inside. Am I correct on that? The language inside can be workshopped with our other policies, and then we can vote on the actual true language in, in, uh, November 19th.
Yep.
So that, we're good there, so that's what we're, that's what we're voting on here.
Yes.
To intend to advertise, okay. I don't see anyone else lit to speak or comment. So, let's go ahead and vote on the intent to advertise to amend, uh, the school board policy in bylaw 0, 0163, and setting a public hearing at the board meeting on November 14th, 2023. And it passes four to one with Ms. Messenger as a no, and explaining my yes. I'm okay with bringing it up to discuss more, um, and, and hear, and hear public comment. Uh, item number 16, workshop item request. You all have gotten that, we've, all the requests have basically been put into place until like December. So we need more, uh, any other items for workshops as we move forward. Give that to the, um, superintendent, and we'll get those into, uh, the calendar. Updates, moving to, any, or any questions on any of the workshop items we have coming up?
We've got a TBD.
Agenda stuff?
To be determined for the meet, workshop after October 27th.
That's because of the reorg.
Oh.
And so it could change from a Friday, you know what I mean?
Okay, got it.
Um, all right, uh, item number 18, legal department update, Mr. Dyke?
Not, not anything specific, uh, we're running pretty smooth, uh, working with the new general counsel, and, uh, board members are contacting me with, uh, anything they have between meetings, so, uh, everything's, everything's good.
Thank you. Um, operation, Mr. Renaldi?
Good afternoon, a couple, a couple brief items. First of all, human resources. On the 28th, September 28th, we had our, uh, our career fair and our job fair, par- and teachers. We had 83 participants, uh, we made 23 offers, 18 para, para professionals and five teachers. So it was a pretty successful event. Our next operation job fair is going to be at Wakeland from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on October 26th. So we're continuing with our job fairs. Transportation, uh, four drivers are scheduled for our upcoming class that is going to commence on Monday. We interviewed eight with six conditional offers to additional drivers beyond those four. Um, and they're going through the process right now of obtaining their permits, so we can get them scheduled into our classes as well. We have two new drivers doing behind-the-wheel training. They completed their classroom work last week, so they're now, um, out on the streets doing the training. Approximately, if all of these candidates come through, we're going to have about 112, uh, drivers. So we, we are making, uh, major strides, and I think a big, uh, part of that was, uh, coming to agreement with Ask Me and bringing up the wages as a result. So we're, we're getting there slowly, hopefully, all those, uh, conditional offers will come through, they'll get their permits, and we'll be in pretty good shape. Food service, um, they had over 150 food service workers that will receive their attendance incentive bonus for the first quarter. That's 46% of the food service team had perfect attendance for the first quarter. So, uh, we're pretty happy with that. In addition to the National School Lunch Week that you heard about earlier, Food and Nutrition Services is also celebrating Farm to School Month in October. All schools will receive a Florida Fresh Produce item every single Friday. Features item include grapefruits, Florida cucumbers, and Florida oranges. In addition, elementary schools will have nutrition, education, both in board. So thank you to all the Florida farmers, we're recognizing them through this program as well. In October, um, the, uh, all-staff meeting for food service is going to happen this Friday. A staff will participate in, uh, customer service training. Um, staff will participate in, uh, customer service training. Uh, also, in addition to that, there'll be cooking and knife skill demonstrations as well, as well as some leadership training too. So, uh, I think the knife skills will be interesting, so, um, and as, uh, looking at, one of the issues I want to bring up that may be hitting the news, uh, shortly is there is a milk carton shortage, I don't know if anyone has heard about this, but, uh, there is, and, and it's not regional, it's nationwide, uh, it's affecting some vendors, uh, more regionally at this point right now. Uh, it turns out there is a single company who supplies eighty-five percent of the milk cartons to the United States, believe it or not, and they are experiencing a labor shortage, a new ERP system, and, uh, equipment failures as well. So that company is really impacting everybody. Our primary vendor, TG Lee, is keeping us updated on a, on a daily basis as to how their supply is working. At this point, at the earliest, we think we'll see anything happening is maybe the middle of next week. Uh, we are working both with the USDA and Florida Department of Agriculture, since we need to put some waivers in place if we're going to reduce the amount of, uh, and type of milks that we're going to be offering as well, so we're going through that. Um, what actions we're taking is immediate removal of milk from the snack menu, uh, as, as well as limiting, limiting it to, uh, for the, for the lunch menu as well. Uh, we may be offering only one type of milk, uh, we're not sure which type, yes. Yet, we're looking at, uh, shelf-stable milk, the possibility of using that. We're working with TG Lee, we may see some plastic containers, uh, or something maybe similar to like the Capri Sun, those type of things for the shelf-stable milks. Uh, and we're also, um, looking to provide poured milk at student requests as well, because that is a little bit of a custodial issue, and we want to make sure we're metering the amount of poured milk the students get as well. So I'll keep you up to date, hopefully, um, this may ta- actually be through December at this point right now, is what, what is being a- anticipated. Uh, custodial, they're doing their semi-annual, uh, training for their head custodians, um, and that's going to happen this Friday as well. Um, the entire operations team, along with, uh, a number of other, uh, staff members from other departments, will be presenting various topics, uh, leadership skills, carpet cleaning, disinfection, uh, equipment repairs, fire and safety training, roof leaks, bulb replacement, and, uh, the critical nature of emergency work order processing as well. So that's all on their agenda, uh, this Fri- Friday. They'll also be introducing the new head custodians, and turns out, uh, this year we have nine new head custodians coming on board as well. And most of those, uh, come up through the ranks as well. Um, in regards to construction, thank you all who were able to attend the TARA groundbreaking. We're working on, uh, the groundbreaking for, uh, Onico and Blackburn at this point, and we'll be having ribbon cuttings probably a little bit after the first of the year for Southeast High School, the Science, as well as Lakewood Ranch, uh, that classroom building as well. So, that's the quick summary, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, Mr. Jensen?
Good afternoon, Chair Chip, Board Members, Superintendent Weisong.
Good afternoon, what can I do for you?
Oh.
Present for me?
So, um, first of all, I just want to congratulate Dr. Gansimer and Mr. Wagner on an absolutely wonderful MTC open house on October fifth. Um, we had more than twelve hundred people in attendance who were able to explore, um, the different programs on campus, uh, meet counselors and staff, and even apply for employment from different employers that were there at the facility. It was a, it was a really fabulous event. Um, I'm also here to remind everyone that this week is the end of a very successful first quarter. Um, I can't believe we're already to this point, but teachers are, uh, completed their first RIT score practice assessment last week. They're finishing their quarter one benchmark exams, and, um, they'll have a record day on Friday to finalize their grades, which will be published, um, for parents and students to access on ten eighteen. So, um, as I've walked classrooms throughout the district, um, kind of going through different school visits with administrators, seeing what's happening with students and teachers in all of our classrooms, I'm just blown away by the instructional quality that I'm seeing in, in every single classroom I'm in. So, um, congratulations to our teachers on a successful first quarter, and I'm, I'm looking forward to continued success in quarter number two. And then finally, continuing our focus on the science of reading, um, I just wanted to brief you that we will have all of our elementary school administrators, our principals, assistant principals, and our literacy coaches begin their, um, training from the UF Lassinger Center on the science of reading, um, next week. And they'll be working as a cohort to go through that program. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you have a question? Yep.
So can you tell me real quick which schools have vocational programs actually in the schools? Like, I know we have the automotive program at Parish High School, or do you know where we have any, are there any other ones that exist in our schools anywhere?
I could provide you with a list, I could, you know, I'll work with Mr. Dr. Gansimer and get you a list.
I was just curious, and I'd also like to know, how do we, and I don't know if Mr. Rinaldi knows this too, how do we get, how do we transport children, or do we transport children, are they responsible for getting? Like, if they're in high school, but they want to take a vocational training program at MTC, are they responsible for their own transportation to get there, or do we provide that, or we used to provide it?
We, th- there are a num- number of programs that we work with MTC that we do provide transportation from the high school to MTC for select programs, yes.
Okay.
And I can get you the specifics on those numbers as well.
I know that complicates the, an already complicated transportation problem. I've just had, for whatever reason, I had a number of constituents lately asking me about, well, what are we doing in the high schools, and even some county commissioners, and how are we, you know, pushing vocational training? I assume that what's happening is business leaders in the community are talking to them and saying, we need more vocation, more vocation, more vocation, and then what are the barriers, the barriers are, well, these kids are at high school, but they can't get all the way over to MTC, or whatever that might be. Uh, yeah, if I could just
Okay, I'll get some
A report on where the vocational programs are, and then how we, what programs exist to get the kids to and from, if we have any. And if we don't, that's fine too, I mean, if, you know, if we're just, if we don't have enough transportation capacity to do that, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Can I add to that real quick?
Sure.
For instance, the Parish Community Automotive, what a great program that is out there. If students at Lakewood Ranch wanted to go to that, if they could do that as an elective, wouldn't they have to provide their own transportation from there to there? I'm guessing yes?
They, I'm not going to answer for, Dr. Weisong, go ahead.
Yeah, there, there, there would not be transportation between programs. I do think as, um, all of us that are in new leadership roles settle in, I think, looking at our school choice processes and some of those opportunities could yield more career and tech opportunities, but that's for future work.
Right, okay, it's just something, you know, we can't put that level of automotive in every one of our high schools, because that's an enormous program, and it's run by a great teacher out there. Um, but if some other high school is interested in that field, if we could get that student to, maybe that'd be their last class of the day to go out there, that would be tremendous cross-school, um, sharing of that program, so.
I agree, I can, um, I can follow up with, you know, our current programs, current approaches to providing access to those programs, and then also, you know, what conversations have been had about expanding access to those programs as well.
All right, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Um, superintendent, any remarks?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, to follow up on an earlier question, um, regarding the, um, prior years of experience that come in, the answer is twelve years of experience, that is what's in the contract, so, thank you. Um, uh, board members, um, just to highlight, uh, today, uh, you approved fifteen items that were on the consent agenda, so that we can continue the daily operation of the district. I'll just highlight two of those, um, items. Um, on the personnel side, um, you approved my recommendation, um, to move Dr. Lori Breslin from her current role as Executive Director for Curriculum and Professional Learning to her new role, um, starting on the sixteenth, of Executive Director for Student Support and Family Engagement. Um, and, um, we are, um, excited, uh, to give Dr. Breslin, uh, an additional, um, opportunity, uh, and, um, to, um, coordinate, uh, the work of five different departments um, that are really going to be crucial as we try to create long-term, um, learning growth in, um, English Language Arts and Mathematics. Um, and again, um, Dr. Breslin's prior position, uh, or current position will not be filled, those departments will report directly to Mr. Jensen, um, since that's an area of, of expertise for him. So, again, getting, getting everybody in, in the right place, so we're excited for that. Um, the other thing I want to highlight is you approved all of the school's two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school improvement plans. Um, those documents are the bread and butter work of, um, instructional quality and improvement. Um, that is the work that our, our principals and their leadership teams are, um, focused on, and, um, amidst all of the issues and, and questions and concerns that we're working with, um, the key to, um, becoming a, an A district and sustaining, um, that performance um, is embedded in the strategies that, that are in those school improvement plans. So just want to highlight that and thank all of our principals and their teams, um, for the hard work that goes into those, um, plans every year. Um, additionally, I want to thank, um, uh, uh, four individuals who worked together recently, um, uh, on a public service announcement that went out to all of our secondary families related to school safety. Uh, and so, um, Sheriff Wells, uh, Chair Choat, Deputy Butler and Guardian Gilamo, uh, we appreciate, uh, all of them for, uh, participating, um, in a, um, very clear message um, about, um, school safety, student safety, um, and, um, sharing information when that emerges. So, um, thank you, um, to, um, everyone who participated in that effort. And again, that, that PSA that was sent out, we, we did send it to parents, um, in advance of it being shown in schools, and, um, my hope is that there were lots of, um, dinner table or weekend conversations, um, between families um, about school safety and, and the role that each student and each family in our community plays in, in keeping our schools safe. Um, last, uh, last week, uh, Leadership Manatee, um, held their annual education day, and of course, um, our staff and our schools played a prominent role in that. Um, so thank you to Mr. Wagner and Manatee Technical College for hosting the group, um, along with tours at Southeast High School and SUG Middle School, uh, and then finally, um, finishing the day with a, uh, panel of, uh, district leaders from my cabinet. We very much enjoyed interacting with the Leadership Manatee, uh, participants. Uh, board members, I enjoyed, uh, spending some time with you last week at Parish Community, uh, for a, uh, donor event, and then, um, at TARA for the groundbreaking, and I'll, I'll leave, um, uh, I'll leave the details to all of you, uh, to discuss in your comments. Um, I do want to mention, coming up, uh, at our next meeting, because our team's well, uh, well underway with the planning for October twenty-fourth, um, you, uh, you and members of the public will be seeing the, um, uh, design plan for the new K through eight campus, uh, that will be coming to the east side of the district. So that'll be the, the first public showing of the design work for that campus. And then we will also be bringing you, uh, the report of the calendar committee, uh, and the first, uh, public look at the draft twenty-four, twenty-five student attendance calendars. Um, so those items will be coming on ten twenty-four, along with the last piece of the, um, human resources work that we've been doing. Um, so we're completely done now with the, um, collective bargaining units. Now we need to go back and address, um, administrative personnel and non-bargaining hourly personnel. My team is, uh, working on all of that this week, and we hope to bring you those proposals, um, for your approval on October twenty-fourth. Um, and then that will complete all of the, um, personnel salary and benefit cycles, um, for this school year. Um, a law, and that all coincides with the start of employee open enrollment for next year, that kicks off on October twenty-third. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, board members, just so you know, we have five minutes until our one o'clock workshop that's posted for one o'clock. Um, and I'm sure we all maybe want to take a break and things like that, so just keep that in your mind for these board comments. Yeah, Ms. Messenger, uh, followed by Tatum, Foreman, Spray, myself, Ms. Messenger?
I'm always really quick. Um, I have one thing, my one thing, and it kind of goes back to some of the stuff we've already talked about, about, um, career and technical programs, was about Gettle Automotive. And Gettle Automotive was so generous and donated, you know, um, twenty-five thousand dollars to one of our local high schools where we have the automotive program. And, and really, that's my call out to businesses, right? Like, if you, if you want those employees, help us make those investments in our students, in our programs, so that we can have more students properly trained on whatever equipment. Like, Gettle Automotive even said, hey, we bring the equipment that we have used, stuff that is old or used up, we bring it to them so they can see it, so they can work on it, so that they understand the, what they're going to face when they come in, and then they hire our students. So that's a partnership right there, and so that's really my call out to, you know, if you're hearing from a business that says, well, I really want more people to understand this, or really understand that, well, help us get that program started, help fund that program, let's, let's work together to get this done. So that was it, thank you so much.
Mr. Chaney?
I'll do my safety message real quick then. Yes, that was a great video, I watched it, and I would encourage, probably there aren't a lot of students that watch these board meetings, but I think there are some personnel and staff members, and especially if you're a teacher, I would show that video in your classroom, you know, especially in middle school and high school, and just make a point, like, let's talk about this, this is serious stuff, and you don't want to make the big mistake. So if you're watching this, I would encourage all the teachers to really have a, you know, a conversation with your children about, number one, the dangers of these weapons being in our school, and number two, the serious consequences for your future that you may not think about when you're twelve or thirteen or sixteen or seventeen, but having an adult there explaining that to you might, might just might, especially an adult that you respect, and I think most of our teachers are respected, might just might click that little switch in a, in a student's brain to go, mm, yeah, I don't want to, I don't want a felony charge on my record for the rest of my life when I'm applying for jobs and stuff like that. So that's the end of my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Foreman?
I'll be brief, because I'm hungry. Um, two things, one, the Big Bank Theory, um, is being, uh, uh, coming up in our high schools, and, uh, through the Chamber of Commerce, did it last year, it's great fun. Um, wonderful interaction with, with our students, and I would encourage anybody who can, you only have to commit to a half a day at a time, um, to go on the, the Chamber's website and, uh, and sign up for our school. It's just, it's a great experience, and it's very important, and they are really needing people this year. And secondly, just to thank you, a shout out to, uh, two of our commenters, uh, today, uh, Bowen Summer and Mr. DePauli, you both brought items to our attention that I think that, uh, um, can, uh, you know, help us to be, uh, better board members and make constructive, uh, impact on our school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Spray?
Um, I did attend the donation thing, it was a great event, uh, it was just tremendous how much they do out there. Uh, we did go through master board training on Tuesday. Um, we also had, um, the TARA groundbreaking, and the contractors and architect there was really, really good, the presentation they gave. Uh, I also attended Southeast Football with Dr. Weisong last Friday, what a great, uh, planned program they have there, needs a little help, but they have a lot of spirit. So I would encourage any, again, sponsors that want to help our school and athletics department, look at Southeast, they need a little bit more to get them over that edge. Also, I just wanted to mention that I grabbed a, uh, East County Observer, and they featured some of our students in there for our swim team from Lakewood Ranch, uh, and one from Southeast. So I wanted to highlight that. Uh, other than that, good meeting, I think it's good discussions on what I brought forward. I hope, uh, it was received as informational, um, and not confirmational. So, uh, that's about all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, to, to the two public comments that, that Ms., um, Foreman mentioned as well, thank you. We do have in our workshop, uh, coming up sometime the next couple of months, I can't remember the exact date, but facility usage and, and that, that has been brought up to me quite a bit along, you know, times, is, many, many, many times, that, um, what are we doing, you know, with locked in the schools and the playgrounds and all that kind of stuff? So that is something we are going to discuss, um, and, and I believe pretty strongly in, in the code of conduct as well, and, and we'll be discussing that, I'm sure, as soon as, as soon as Dr. Weisong feels like it's, it's appropriate. But other than that, great meeting, um, and, uh, look forward to the workshop in TV minus like five minutes, and we are adjourned.